For the afternoon of April 13th, 2021, Tony, could you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
President.
Morales.
Here.
Cohen.
Yeah.
Roscoe.
Here.
Davis. Esparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Lucardo.
Present. Thank you. If you're able to stand, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag. States of America. To Republic. Which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided to Imam Tahira Noor with the South Bay Islamic Association. Imam Tahira has been an incredible leader, not just here in our region, but in fact nationally and is globally respected for his scholarly insights, and I just want to thank him for spending some time with us and wish him a very happy, holy month of Ramadan. Councilmember Cohen will tell us more.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, I think he's still in the attendees, so Henry has to...
Okay, Henry's gonna try to...
Analyst. I introduce Imam Tahira Noor, who was born in London and has been a resident of San Jose since 1983, went to school in downtown San Jose and also on the east side. He's been Imam of the South Bay Islamic Association since the year 2000 and teaches Islamic law at Zaituna College, America's first accredited Muslim liberal arts college in Berkeley. He's currently the chairman of the Board of the North American Islamic Shelter for the Abused, an organization that works towards alleviating issues related to domestic violence and runs two shelters for victims of domestic violence in the Bay Area. He served on the Human Rights Commission for the City of San Jose for over five years and on the Human Relations Commission for the County of Santa Clara for a year. The South Bay Islamic Association is one of the oldest Islamic centers in the nation. It was founded at Sunnyvale in 1978 and was incorporated in 1980, and they purchased a downtown mosque on Third Street in 1983. As they grew, they needed a bigger facility, so they purchased a 70,000 square foot facility in District Four of 880 in Montague where they're now headquartered. They've been serving the Muslim community through various activities and also continue to work with many other local institutions such as Salvation Army, Second Harvest Food Bank, and other churches and synagogues to serve the local community. And I want to, so I want to welcome Imam Tahira Noor during this first week of Ramadan and thank him for being here with us today.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon, Sam, thank you so much, good afternoon. I'd like to begin by thanking the honorable council member David Cohen for inviting me to do the invocation on this blessed afternoon. Today is the first day of Ramadan, the ninth month of the Islamic lunar calendar, which is a month in which over a billion Muslims around the world are going to fast from dawn to sunset. This also means, and maybe just throw in a little humor here, this also means that we wake up before dawn to have breakfast, and of course, on the first day, we, the alarm doesn't work, or we set it wrong, and so, you know, some of us don't wake up like myself. So I'm literally fasting on an empty, completely empty stomach. The tens of thousands of Muslims of the city of San Jose began Ramadan last night with prayer. We had to register to come to the mosque, we limited numbers, we wore masks, and we were socially distant, and we also shortened our prayer services significantly. We woke up early this morning, minus myself, to prepare for the first fast of an entire month of fasting. Ramadan is a time in which we remind ourselves of our frailty and our dependence on God for sustenance, to show us what it feels like to be hungry and thirsty, so that we feel compassion and a duty to help the poor and needy, to be people who have a moral compass and utilize our time wisely in service to God and humanity. As it's been said before, we are San Jose. The city of San Jose is made up of people of many diverse backgrounds, which makes our great city what it is. My faith reminds me to respect all human beings and all faiths. Dr. Martin Luther Jr., Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. has been, it's said, said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" In the Bible, we read, "Three things will last forever: faith, hope, and love, and the greatest of these is love." In the Jewish tradition, we're reminded, "Love your neighbor as yourself." In my own tradition, we frequently remind ourselves by saying, "A perfect Muslim is one whose tongues and hands mankind is safe from," and to love for another what you love for yourself. In this age of ever-increasing hatred, phobia, and fear, and it grows to other communities, you know, Muslims have been, you know, there for many years, and now we see our Asian-American brothers and sisters. It is incumbent that we look out for each other and trust each other. We get to know our neighbors and we trust our leaders. That is because the face of America today is not just white or black, Hispanic or Asian, it is diversity. It isn't one solid colored blanket, but a patchwork quilt threaded together with the unique motifs of all of our stories. And so I end once again with two very famous quotes of Dr. King. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy," and he said, "Love is the only force capable of transforming an enemy into a friend." With that said, thank you so much.
Thank you, Imam. Thank you for those inspiring words, and thank you for all of the service that members of the SBIA are engaged in throughout our community constantly and supporting their community, and thank you, and bless you on this, in this time of Ramadan.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move forward now to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I think Councilmember Morales.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mayor. So actually, I would like to recommend a deferral of item 3.4 for two weeks.
So again. And Councilmember Crossco?
Yes, I'd like seven, given the heavy items that we have on the calendar, I wanted to ask for 7.1 to be heard right after consent.
Okay. Councilmember Pross, you accept that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, that's all right with the secretary.
Yes.
Councilmember Pross, I appreciate that there's art to defer this. One issue's come up with regard to interpreters, which I know we have to pay for in advance, and it comes very, very expensive, given the duration of these meetings. So I wanted to ask, I don't know to what extent, it's already been communicated publicly that there'd be a deferral sought, but if we could proceed with public comment to be able to benefit from the interpretation services that the city's paying for, we might have public comment this week and then perhaps go to decision next week?
I believe we have put out the word that it would be deferred, and so if it's, especially since the item is not up yet, I don't know if it's possible to recoup, you know, whatever the cost might have been for the public speakers, or excuse me, for the translators.
Tony, I don't know, do you know the answer to that?
Um, it's, I can't cancel the translators at this point, they're coming on at 2:30. I can cancel them, but we're still going to pay for them, so I was just going to let them continue. But I have them scheduled for 2:30 because we have the Board of Fair Campaign and Political Practices interviews, although now that's pushed with 7.1 being before it, but the translators will come on at 2:30.
Okay, thanks, Tony. All right, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Dr. Wally Weiner. Dr. Wally passed away on Monday, March 29th, at the ripe age of 88. I know there are several Wally's family members who are in attendance by Zoom virtually, Wally's daughter Meg and son Nico, son-in-law Chris, daughter-in-law Celine, and grandchildren. And I know their family in Minnesota as well, where Wally was born and raised, and where he'll be buried, and I know they're listening in as well. And Dr. Wally, who was really loud and revered by his patients, was born in Minnesota, as I mentioned, graduated from University of Minnesota Medical School, went on to complete medical training out here on the West Coast, and then went on to serve the public health service in Washington DC during the Vietnam War, taking care of families of those in our services who were in the war zone, who were obviously traumatized by what their loved ones were experiencing. He eventually settled down here in San Jose, and he started pediatric practice on his own, and then in connection with O'Connor Hospital, serving children here for more than 40 years, incredibly, and he spent those decades really with a tireless commitment to families, who was particularly passionate about serving families who struggled so much in our very expensive valley to survive here, and a real passion for love and love for children who, who had to overcome the barriers of poverty. He took it upon himself to learn Spanish, to make his office more welcoming to everyone in his community, and he became very involved in the community in various ways. He was a longtime member of the Family Health Plan Board of Commissioners in San Clara County, and he served the O'Connor Hospital's healthcare ethics program at San Clara University, and was very passionate about expanding education and ethics for healthcare workers, and became very active also in various social justice efforts here in San Jose. I became, I got to know Dr. Wally over the last decade and a half or so, because we both attended a St. Joseph's Church and just really admired his passion for service for the community, for the kids he served, and I know he loved his family very much. So we're all very sorry to see Dr. Wally go, and I wanted to thank his family for lending him to our community for more than four decades in serving and supporting our community. All right. If there are no other comments, then we'll vote on the motion of Councilmember Pross.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Morales.
Hi.
Cohen.
Hi.
Crossco.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Esparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Hi.
Mahan.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Lucardo.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. We're on to the closed session report, Nora.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have anything to report out of closed session this morning, thanks.
Okay. On the consent calendar, I see Councilmember Arenas would like to pull item 2.17, which is the approval of stress awareness month. There are other items to be pulled from consent. Okay. Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm really proud today to highlight Evergreen School District for our Stress Awareness Month in April, and I was just thinking back, that last April, we did the same proclamation for stress awareness, and who would have known that one year later, we would still be quite deep into this pandemic and just getting ourselves out of this, and thus really highlighting the need for us to deal with stress in a healthy manner. Many of us have been working from home for about a year, some of us have been doing a bit of a hybrid, going into the office and being careful about safeguarding yourself with all the protocols, and so all of these changes to our social and work life has created a lot of stress, and especially for our children in our school system. And so I know that this was really important for our Evergreen School District, and they recognize that stress is, you know, very negative in terms of healthy development, and it can really change the formation of brain development for our younger children. And so it's really important for us to recognize how to deal with it. And one of the things that they did, I really, really love, as a parent, it's called a Mental Health and Wellness Connections webpage, and so I encourage you all to look for it, it's under the Evergreen School District, Mental Health and Wellness Connection webpage, and, and then there's a portal there that provides an opportunity for you as a parent or an educator or student to click different resources, and there is one particular item that I wanted to highlight from that, and that is the ability to message with a crisis counselor, and so I encourage parents and teachers who are dealing with a lot and may not have the time or resource to connect with a counselor, to use some of these online resources, including the one that our Evergreen School District has done. And so with that, I wanted to highlight Dr. Emmy Flores as, and her leadership and her folks who have, who have brought so much resources for parents. I know that they worked really hard on a wonderful video, and so I'd love to see if we could share that video.
The Evergreen School District is committed to the overall academic, social, and mental wellness of our students, parents, and staff. This pandemic has challenged our community to the core. Because of that, we have taken aggressive and proactive steps to create systems of support and provide students with opportunities beyond academics. We have used our financial resources to hire a dynamic wellness team of counselors and social workers, and have organized a comprehensive system of support for students, families, and staff. Our students have also experienced great isolation during this time of lockdown and distance learning. Never before have they expressed feelings of being alone, depression, and often boredom. We understand that students need broad opportunities to connect with their peers and engage in meaningful activities of interest to them. For this reason, we continue to offer countless enrichment classes, such as speech and debate, art, music, physical movement classes, coding, cooking, Spanish, public speaking, and so much more. We also know that this pandemic continues to challenge parents, who, like students, also need support. To address their needs, we provide weekly resources, workshops, and student groups, so parents can be better prepared to face these unprecedented challenges. The Evergreen School District is made up of a special community that genuinely cares about each other. We are committed to the overall academic, social, and mental wellness of our students, parents, and staff, and we will continue to provide the same level of support beyond this pandemic.
So once again, I'd just love to point you towards the Evergreen School District and their wonderful resources. Or please connect with your Human Resources Department to find out some of information about a crisis counselor or some of the resources you have available through your insurance or in our community. We all need to make sure that we take care of ourselves so that we can take care of others. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the public now. Mr. Speaker, would you like to speak on this or any other consent item?
Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. Yeah, I would like to speak on the retroactive approval of dumpster day things. I just wanted to thank yourselves as a city government and the city government staff who placed, you know, these dumpster days, retroactive approval of these dumpster days onto the agenda item for today. I hope it can remind ourselves, I think it's been done, to remind ourselves of, you know, there can be a chance of really good communication between all parts of local neighborhoods and people who have homes, the people who don't have homes. It can be a Saturday morning experience that can really bring together all parts of the community. I'm sure Paul Pereira, Mayor's aide, he works on these sort of things. He has an interesting part in trying to coordinate how this can happen well. And yeah, just thanks again to city staff for putting it on the city agenda and making it available and aware for us to understand. You know, that good communication is really important in local neighborhoods at this time, and it can really help just make for better understandings. And so we don't have to be so argumentative. And it always helps to just know your neighbor, basically, even if they have a home or if they don't have a home. And so thank you for this item. And I guess that's about all. I hope you can continue this sort of efforts and work. And it makes for a good city practice. And thanks.
Thank you. Is there a motion on consent?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Peralas.
Hi.
Cohen.
Hi.
Crossco.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Ms. Barza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Thank you.
Yes. Wally.
Hi.
Mahan.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Licardo.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks. Let's take 7.1 out of order. This is the public park naming. We'll consider the naming of the park in Jamelie Way, Delano Manong's Park. Is there a presentation on this day?
There, yes, there is. We'll brief. Pull it up here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you for hearing this item ahead of other items on the agenda. We will be brief. I'm Nicole Burnham, Deputy Director with the Department of Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services. And I'm joined today by Rebecca Ross. And I'm going to turn it over to her to start the presentation.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers Rebecca Ross, Supervising Planner, Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services. We're very excited today to present to you a park name for a future park located on the west side of Capitol Avenue, north of McKee, just at Jamelie Way. Next slide. This park is expected to open sometime this summer or early fall. It's about a half an acre and it's surrounded by another half an acre of publicly accessible recreational space. It will include a children's play area, sporting lawn, and picnic tables.
And with that, I will just walk you through our park naming process and outreach. We did a protocol of outreach that we're still modifying and adopting, but we did some online survey and solicited names. We had 35 people participate in that. We received 26 unique naming suggestions. We reviewed those in comparison to the city naming policy and found 11 names that qualified. We did a second survey and opened voting on all 11 of those names, but there was not one that really got a majority of votes. So we took the top three names and reissued a new survey with just the top three names in early December of 2020. We had 326 community members participate and express support for the naming of this park as Delano Manong's Park. The name honors the historical event of Delano Grape Strike that increased wages and improved working conditions. It's a strike that started in 1965 and lasted for five years. The name also honors our Filipino community and was put forward by members of that community. And so we are asking for acceptance of the naming of this new park as Delano Manong's Park. And this is also was supported by the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thanks, Nicole.
All right, we'll go to members of the community first. Paul Soto.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Carrasco for her advocacy with respect to the placement and all the work associated to make this happen. Larry Italong was really the he was the core advocate for for what eventually happened in Delano in 1965. He was the catalyst. And in essence, this was a human being that was tired and sick and tired of the way that he and his people were being exploited, were being marginalized, were being literally dehumanized. And that profit was being made as a result of that dehumanization. This was the core of the issue. And to his credit, he was the one that sparked that which was already that which was already happening within the context of the fields. It's been a long time coming. Anytime that Caesar Chavez has talked about it, Deloris has talked about, I always mention Larry because he was on par with him. And without his actions, the movement with respect to Caesar and Deloris might not have ever happened. We don't know that. All we know is that when they kicked it off in Delano, that Chavez and Deloris followed suit. And that's what happened. And so preserving that part of history within the context of a city park, I just want to congratulate Councilmember Carrasco for advocacy on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thelma Boak. Trustee Boak. We're not able to hear you right now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Welcome.
All right, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo and distinguished members of the San Jose City Council. My name is Thelma Boak, President of the Board of Trustees for the Berriessa Union School District. I wear many hats. As a retired educator, former principal of Silver Creek High School and Independence High School, and a resident here in San Jose, specifically here in Berriessa, since 1976. I'm calling to speak in support and request that all of you vote in support of the naming of the Delano Manong's Park. This naming is not only a tribute to our generation and to our community. It has a very special meaning to me and my family. My dad was of the Manong generation. He arrived here in 1926 at the age of 16 and worked as an agricultural worker with many others. Many of them, like my father, fought in World War II to defend our American democracy. Fortunately, my dad survived, but we know that many of them did not. To us, the word Manong is a symbol of admiration and adoration and the deepest respect for those who laid the pathway for all of us. Their legacy of sacrifice is one we hold dear in our hearts. The Delano Manong's Park preserves our history and will continue to bring their stories of bravery, resistance, and courage into our future. This will be the first park in the city of San Jose named in honor of Phil Am history. And we see it as imperative as we show our strength and stance against Asian hate. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to all of you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee. Brenda Sendejas. I'm sorry. Okay, Brenda, please go ahead and raise your hand if somehow there was a problem there. Brenda, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good afternoon, Councilwoman and Councilman Mayor. My name is Brenda Sendejas. I'm from District Five. Today I'm calling to ask you today to support naming of this public park by North McKee to Delano Malong in honor of our Filipino community. There's a lot of activism that has been done. And we are living in a climate that I think the best thing to do is to honor and respect our Filipino community by naming this park, the Delano Malong. Thank you for your time and you guys have a great day.
Thank you. Daniel Lazo.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Daniel Lazo, and I am a second-generation Filipino-American, born and raised in Eastside San Jose in Berriessa. And I'm speaking on behalf of Lead Filipino, a grassroots Filipino organization in San Jose as an organizer. I submitted the name Delano Manong's Park and here to advocate for this name today. This part of San Jose where the park is located has always had Filipinos. My parents moved to Eastside San Jose almost 25 years ago. My little sister and my cousins had their 18th birthday cotillons at Berriessa Community Center. And there's numerous food distribution places in this part of San Jose that are Filipino, such as Gabriel's Food Market and Valerio's and now the Lost Seafood City. I remember taking the bus all the way from Piedmont Hills to Walsh Park for four years, where the Filipino Youth Coalition would host workshops on history. At the end of every lesson, we would do a song buck sock, one down, one fall. A chant from our Delano Manongs echoed at the end of every labor organizing meeting that would lead the Delano Manong Strike in the 1960s. Manong, from the Ilokano and Northern Philippines language, is a term of affection and respect, best translated as older brother. This endearment does not only give appreciation to the Filipino-American farmworkers such as Larry Itliang, Philip Bear Cruz, Benjamin Guines, and Pete Velasco, who sparked the international five-year boycott on grapes, but also the Mexican and Latinx farmworkers such as Caesar Chavez and Dolor Suerta. I see them all as Manongs and Manongs, all who have contributed to this movement for workers' rights from Delano, Watsonville, San Jose, and all over the world. The first Vice President of the United Farm Workers' Labor Union, Larry Itliang, said, "The day we stop burning with love, our people will die of the cold." So I hope today that the Mayor and Council lead with love in considering the name for our Delano Manongs. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Gabriel Young. Welcome, Gabriel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, in 2017, Pew Research Center estimated 106,000 Filipino-Americans living in San Jose, which is a substantial difference from the 6,000 recorded in 1970. To extrapolate this number, Phil Ams make up almost 10.7% of San Jose's population. And when we conduct a simple Google search for anything Phil Am in San Jose, we are left with restaurants and grocery stores. My name is Gabriel Young, and I was raised in San Jose all my life, where I lived as a former resident of D4 and now D5. During my life, I congregated mostly among Phil Ams, only to realize that my social bubble was created because there were no places or seats for us in San Jose. Whether it be to the lack of support and recognition of the historical Filipino town near First Street, the lack of teaching of Filipino-American history in schools, lack of civil rights advancement recognition, or even the lack of support for the seafood city I used to go to all the time on McKee. The only way to reconcile this, I believe, is to include, unite, and recognize our past, present, and eventually future. As the second-largest demographic in the United States and the only way to bring the tent or to sit in the US to modern racial, ethnic, just standards is by recognizing the history and credit of the Delano Manongs for their contribution towards justice for all. The historical exclusion Filipino-Americans have felt will continue to be perpetuated if this park isn't named after the Manongs, according to Caesar Chavez at the Delano Grape Strike. Recently, the rise in API hate crimes has gone to show the importance of communicating Philippine-American presence and Asian-American presence throughout the United States. And to accredit Asian-Americans for the rise in civil, in the advancement of civil rights will be credited definitely and memorialized through the naming of this park. So with that, I ask for unanimous vote to approve the Delano Manongs name. Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor and Council, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Angelica Cortez.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Licardo, Councilmember Carrasco, and City Council. I am Dr. Angelica Cortez, the founder of Lead Filipino. You've heard from many of us so far, a San Jose-based organization and one of the groups alongside Fawn Santa Clara Valley that helped to organize support for the naming of this Delano Manong's Park spanning the past few months. I'm speaking with you all as a resident of D5, but also on behalf of the hundreds of members, families, and seniors of Lead Filipino. We not only stand behind Daniel Lazo's advocacy, we recognize that across two community surveys administered by the city that the Delano Manong's Park was the top choice in both poll results. We find these results heartening and a steadfast reminder of the legacy of the Delano Manongs that lives on in San Jose's residents, families, and our own organizational message. In Lead Filipino's programs, we center our work around the bravery of the Manongs, many of which, as you've heard, were young men in the 1930s that left the Philippines to pursue the American dream, but were subjected to harsh and grueling work conditions. Our Manongs were objectified in use for their labor, outlawed to marry and penalized for socializing confined to taxi dance halls. And on their one evening off a week, only to be back in the fields by 3:00 AM, show us the meaning of resistance and strength. As Tita Thelma stated, the naming of this park is a tribute not only to a generation and not only to the San Jose community, but to a state and country where the Delano Manong's Park becomes one of the less than dozen public parks named after and in honor of Phil Am history. Thank you again on behalf of Lead Filipino, and I would especially like to recognize Councilmember Carrasco for hosting this afternoon's press conference. We appreciate this gesture and thank you all again.
Thank you. Kathy.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Kathy Tran, and I'm from District Three of San Jose. I've been a lifelong resident of the city and I use our parks daily. I'm here to share my excitement as a union worker and advocate for the approval of this park name. It is so meaningful to honor the Filipino workers who fought for our rights, as well as celebrate our Filipino community members by honoring and naming this park. I would thank you for your time and I really am excited about this.
Thank you, Ally.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, good afternoon. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Ally Hughes, and I'm here to represent Supervisor Otto Lee to share his support for item 7.1. So Supervisor Otto Lee strongly supports naming the park, the Delano Manongs Park, to honor Filipino-American brothers and sisters in the city of San Jose. It's long overdue that we honor them and their generations of legacies within our city. And the supervisor also wants to extend a very special thank you to Lead Filipino and Dr. Cortez for spearheading this effort and for highlighting the history of our Filipino-American brothers and sisters in the city. And we politely urge the San Jose City Council to vote to confirm this historic park naming and to stand in solidarity with our, excuse me, with our Filipino-American community. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Clarence.
Oh, sorry. Trying to figure this tech. So thank you, members of the City Council for considering the naming of the Delano Manongs as one of our newest parks here in the city of San Jose. as one of our newest parks here in the city of San Jose. I think the time's kind of perfect that we're naming a new park, especially during the occurrence of such API hate going around throughout the country and even here in our own backyard. The Delano Manongs, matter of fact, my brother, my grandfather was a Delano Manong. They work hard in the fields and they struggled. And we're seeing that activists back then during the 60s, 50s and 60s, fighting for civil rights, working with the Latino brothers and sisters in the farm fields, fighting for equal rights. Me is a testament of what we can do as a community when justice has happened in our own backyards. So as a resident of 95133, I look forward to seeing this park when it go by on North Capitol and be reminded about the struggles, the achievements that generations have done that we can do in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Don.
Hello, my name is Don Nguyen and I'm from Akbayan, SJSU. So something to remember is that parks and monuments are a way to make space for the community and by the community, to be used by the community. And what better way to remember our history, our culture, and rights of workers in our city of San Jose than naming the park the Delano Manongs Park? So the history behind it is Larry Itliang, Philip Vera Cruz, Benjamin Gins, and Pete Velasco are some of the few Filipino-American farmworkers who led the Delano Grape Strike along with Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta. And I believe it's very important because this helps give appreciation for the Filipino-American farmworkers, but also the Mexican and Latinx farmworkers, who were all part of this great movement for workers' rights and have influenced our entire history along with other great historic civil rights leaders such as Martin Luther King Jr. As said by the previous speakers, there is a huge portion, a huge portion of the city population are Filipino-Americans. And this would be the first park named after Filipino-Americans in San Jose. And I do believe that especially after the recent attacks on the Asian community and the hate crimes, it is more important than ever that the city recognizes our part in the whole San Jose community because we are a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Daisy.
Hello, my name is Daisy Badosio. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm a D5 resident educator and a mother. The naming of this park is more, as you've heard from many of the others, it's more than just a name. It is a step forward to recognize and honoring the work and all the contributions of our Filipino brothers and sisters. I ask that you vote to confirm the Delano Malong Park name. Thank you.
Thank you. I see the mayor is back. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thanks to all the members of the community for coming out to speak. I want to apologize for having to step away. We think we'll have a good announcement that's coming from the county soon about vaccines. But I appreciate the very important feedback we've got from the community that is assisted in this decision, which is an important one, I know, for a large share of our community. So we should all celebrate. And Councilmember Carrasco, thank you for your leadership. Councilmember Carrasco.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. And I want to thank, first of all, all of the speakers that came out to speak today in support of the naming of the park. But I want to, I guess, just reemphasize a few things that the speakers have already, have already so eloquently expressed. Our Filipino population in the city of San Jose has contributed greatly, not only to the city, but to the entire country. And to be able to recognize our Filipino ancestors in such a way is a great honor for me. I want to be very clear and very honest about something. I didn't do a single thing to bring this item to the council. The community, it was completely community-driven, and I want to be able to place the credit where credit is due. I'm incredibly grateful to our Filipino community who organized, who submitted the name, who went ahead and went through the entire protocol and process to make sure that we're here today and be able to get this passed at City Council. I especially want to acknowledge and thank Dr. Angelica Cortez. I want to thank the National Historic Society of Santa Clara, the Filipino National Historic Society, Santa Clara Valley, Filipino Lead. Of course, the folks that have already spoken today, but they were at the press conference this morning. Uncle Ben Minor, Camille Fontanilla Yanez, who also was a big champion in making sure that our Filipino ancestors are recognized, as well as Ron Muriera, and so many, so many others. I just have the privilege of being able to represent a very large constituency in District Five, especially in 95133. The Filipino community makes up 13% of that zip code. And so it's very, it's noteworthy and it behooves us to give our Filipino community a space and time to be able, not just to recognize their current contributions, but all of the contributions that they've made throughout the generations. You know, the Delano Grape Strike became a pivotal point and will become later known as one of the greatest social movements of our time. And we're grateful to those that led it, but especially to Larry, who organized and convinced thousands of Filipino farmworkers to walk away from their job, to have the courage to stand up for their rights and to make sure that not only would they be taken care of, but also their families as a result of. So it's a huge honor for me to be able to sit here and ask kindly and respectfully the support of my council colleagues for the naming of the Delano Manongs Park, which is in District Five. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for properly attributing credit to the community and community leadership. I do want to make one important point, as I know that there was some suggestions made that there is nothing in our city that was named for the Filipino community. And the Tony C. K. Community Center is a very important institution. Councilmember Carrasco's district, and I'm very familiar with it, it's not far from my home, and a very important gathering space for a community. Councilmember McCollin.
Yeah, just briefly, I want to thank the community for coming out and speaking on this issue and thank those who led the selection of this name. As Councilmember Carrasco said, this zip code in this area is heavily Filipino and it's a zip code that our two districts share, and half is in District Four, half is in District Five. And it's an important, the Filipino community is an important community for this part of San Jose particularly. And so I'm glad that the residents of our two districts will be able to enjoy this park with this name, and I'm full-heartedly in support. So thank you very much for making this happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank all of those who worked so hard to get us to this point. And thank you to all the folks from the community who came out to speak today. This is a historic moment, I think, for our city to be able to acknowledge a city that's been so proud of Cesar Chavez, so proud of the farmworkers movement. Many, many times, Councilmember Carrasco and many others have pointed out that Larry Itliang was the leader. He started the movement and invited Cesar Chavez to join him. And the merger of the two organizations became the United Farm Workers. So this is historic. It's such a proud moment for our city to be able to celebrate this history and what it's contributed to the world. Thank you.
You. Councilmember Carrasco.
You know, I just wanted to add one last thing. I see that Councilmember Arenas also has her hand up, but I just wanted to add one thing. You know, we're living in a time that we're facing one of the worst public health crises that we've ever seen, at least in modern time. And our Filipino brothers and sisters have been on the front line, taking care of us. They're heavily embedded in the healthcare system. There are nurses, there are technicians. They are people who have risked their lives, who have put everything on the line to make sure that we're safe and that we're healthy and that those of us who get sick have an opportunity to go home, to go back to their families. And so I just also want to acknowledge their contributions during one of the most difficult moments that we've seen and all of the sacrifices that they've made in modern, in modern times and in present moments. But I also want to just acknowledge, because I think it's, I think it's critical for us to acknowledge these kinds of situations at every turning point. We're facing such a disheartening moment also in history where there is so many incidents being reported of hate crimes against our API community. And so to be able to recognize our Filipino brothers, especially those who came at such a young age and contributed in such a way and built this valley is not only historical in that sense, but also acknowledges that we're not going to be a city that's going to continue to accept, or I should say, will put up with, accept or sit quietly as these hate crimes continue to happen during these times. And so it's significant because when you put a name on a building, on a facility, on a park, on a street, it acknowledges the community's history, but it also acknowledges that we're providing a safe space for healing, for remembrance, and to memorialize their contributions. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you. I just had to jump in because in my district, we also have a real significant Filipino neighborhoods and community and just wanted to thank Dr. Angelica Cortez, excuse me, for her efforts and all of the youth that called in and just expressed the need to have all of us reflect their faces in our everyday lives, such as a wonderful park that we are opening up. And so I also wanted to mention that we have in my district, a wonderful leader, her name's Angel Sanglong. And just last week, we recognized her and her efforts through the Bayan Nahan Phil Am Foundation. And she's a really active Filipino leader in my district, as well as in many of your districts. She crosses all boundaries, I'm sure, for the Filipino community. And I just wanted to say that I love having such diversity in our community. They bring us so much joy through food, dance, cultural traditions. I remember attending a lot of festivities when I was younger, cotillons specifically. And so it's a lot of fun to be able to share and revel in each other's cultures. And today, I love that we are honoring the Filipino-American culture. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Carrasco, and second, any other comments? All right, let's vote on Councilmember Carrasco's motion.
Arenas.
Yes.
Peralas.
Hi.
Cohen.
Hi.
Carrasco.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi.
Ms. Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Ahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Again, to all the community members and leaders who worked together to make this happen. We're going to go back to 3.1, which is reported by City Manager Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. No report today.
Okay. I'll just note, I think the county has now announced they've received an additional allocation through the federal government to the federally designated clinics. That's very good news for our vaccine supplies. We're still conversating with the state and feds to ensure that that will enable us to get more vaccines into arms, but appreciate county's efforts on that. I'm just noting, since we're on the general subject of reports, 3.3.
Hey, can I just ask a question? There was some land use consent that we were supposed to come, we're supposed to come up next.
Okay, forgive me.
That's okay. I just want to make sure.
You're right. Let's go on to the land use consent calendar. That is 10.1. Councilmember Cohen, you wanted to pull on the items.
Yeah, I wanted to pull D.
Okay, 10.1D is conforming rezoning for the property located at Montague Expressway. Are there any other items to be pulled from the consent calendar in 10.1? Okay, we'll go to the public or any public comment on the consent calendar. Mr. Beckman.
Hi, Blair Beckman here. I was very moved that you renamed, how you renamed a park in San Jose. Thank you. For this item, I just wanted to remind, just, you know, my own personal mantra and reminder that if this is applicable to this one and to the next item, land use items, that mixed income ideas are really interesting. And I think, I hope that in all of your planning of ELI and VLI and low-income issues, affordable housing issues, you really consider affordable housing issues, that you consider how mixed income can really do something really interesting in the next five to 10 years and to think of creative ways to work on those ideas. Just my, like, ever reminder, whenever these sorts of items appear, that hopefully it can be thought of and remembered at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to make a general statement with regard to land use. In particular, the items that we're talking about now is that it's a basic premise of law that one cannot profit from the proceeds of a law or an ordinance that in and of itself is inherently illegal. Okay, so this is a basic premise. And redlining, redlining is, it's illegal on two accounts. It deprived Mexicans and blacks of due process of law. It also deprived them of equal protection under the law. So there was absolutely no democratic, there was no constitutional support for the redlining policies, even though they were law, even though it was done. So I guess what I'm asking the council to do is to challenge itself into reorienting itself to keep that in mind. That a lot of these decisions that are being made with respect to land use, the legitimacy of those decisions and the wealth that is going to be built upon that piece of property, the property itself, the land itself, has not been rectified. It has not been corrected. And we all know, so that's why it's so critically important for the council to take a unified stance and to declare that this has happened and that it needs to be corrected. And then policy, concrete policy that reflects that decision will flow from that. Until that's done, we're building property and allowing others to profit from something that we are already acknowledging was illegal, immoral, and unethical. Thank you.
Thank you. Turning to council. Councilmember Cohen, first, the item you'd like to have pulled, which is 10.1D regarding Montague Expressway site.
Yeah, just wanted to call attention to one thing about that site. So this site is just south of a couple of other sites that are developing mixed use. There's a Riverview Apartments on First Street, which has a beautiful park behind it, right along Guadalupe River with entrance to the Guadalupe River Trail. Parts called Riverview Park. And just south of that parcel is the VTA headquarters. And the VTA is planning to do a transit-oriented development there, which will have mixed use with affordable housing. Interestingly, that property is part of a competition between Stanford and Berkeley as part of their golden shovel competition to help VTA come up with good plans for that site. Uh competition to help VTA come up with good plans for that site. Both of the, of the, of the teams working on that site are, are proposing to extend that park. Further south along the river so that it's a long street, uh section of park that's riverfront and will be a really nice um addition to that community. And they've also suggested that the Hynek's property include a continuation of that strip of park all the way down to Montague Expressway. So I just wanted to make sure that what we do here and we rezone this site, which is zoning from up to five hundred and seventy-five. Um housing units to an industrial site that we keep in mind that this goal to have parkland and all of this. That runs the river all the way down to Montague Expressway and wanna make sure that the zoning won't preempt any potential. Um use of that part of the land for, for parkland. So I know, Robert, you were here and you might be able to answer, answer that.
Yes, thank you, councilmember, and good afternoon, uh Mayor and councilmembers, Robert Manford, PBC Deputy Director for Planning. So the rezoning to IP uh would not prevent the project from providing open space. It could be dedicated as parkland or it could also be privately or publicly accessible open space. There is no specific development proposal yet. If and when the, the applicant provides that, we will determine the appropriate open space through the environmental review. As well as the development review uh process. And then, of course, our community input and council discretion when they act on projects.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, that, that our wishes, at least some people's wishes for that space is, is, is kept on the record. As we, as we rezone this property. So I, I will move the uh land use consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Cohen. Uh, Mr. Shane Hour, you represent the applicant, I presume? Did, did you want?
No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm for item ten point two, the Sabrato.
Understood. Okay, we'll come back to you. Sorry about that. I assumed you. You, you migrated to this side of the screen, so I assumed that you were on this side. My apologies. Uh, okay, so uh. Appreciate the, um, the intention and custom member con. I, I just wonder if there shouldn't be. Some more direct um nudging of the Parks Department uh to begin the conversations with S K Hynek's. Appreciate K Hynek's investment in particularly in expanding manufacturing jobs in our city, which I believe is their intent. Um and since those are important blue collar jobs, we don't want to lose that opportunity. Um but I, I wonder, Dave, if anybody from Parks is on that might be able to speak to actually broach in the conversation with the property owner.
I see Nicole on, but Robert, has, has Parks been engaged in this subject? I, I know this is a conforming zoning, so I, I don't know what the conversation has been.
N- no, um, Parks has not been uh included in any conversation yet, just because there is no development proposal. If and when the applicant provides, uh submits an application, Parks will be brought into the conversation to determine the appropriate open space.
Yeah, so Mayor, this is a conforming zoning, so I'm, I'm assuming the council member's concerns. We just wanted to make sure we were clear about what the conforming zoning was accomplishing. And what the parameters were moving forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that point. I'm just concerned about the sequence. With all due respect, if by the time someone submitted an application is the first time we're talking to them. They've already spent a lot of resources and they're pretty far down their path and they're probably not likely to be as open. To whatever council member con or the Parks Department might be interested in. So I would just encourage a proactive outreach. I think that would go a long way rather than waiting for someone uh to be seven figures into their application to start the conversation.
Mayor Nancy. We can, we have good relationships with the company and with the, the representation, the attorney for the company, so we can, we can talk to Parks and connect them.
Great, thank you, Nancy. Wonderful. Thank you and appreciate again the uh the willingness of uh Hynek's to invest in our city. Okay, so uh we have councilmember Cohen's motion. Um and was, did that include the rest of the consent calendar, councilman Cohen?
Yes, all, all four items.
Okay, great. Also wanna just thank Salvation Army for their many years uh service uh to our most vulnerable residents. And appreciate their ambitions to try to do more um through their redevelopment of their site as well. To serve more residents uh struggling in our community. All right, uh let's vote on councilman Cohen's motion.
Menas?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Davis?
Hi.
Barza?
Yes.
Renas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we are now back to uh the regular order on the agenda. Uh which is item three point three, the Board of Fair Campaign and Political Practices appointments. Um, there's no.
Presentation.
Yeah.
You have three um interviews to do. Louis Silver is first, and I just promoted him to panelist. So he will be able to share his video if he chooses. Um and then after Louis will be Isabella.
Great. Thank you, Tony.
Ma- Mayor, can I, point of order, can I ask? So there seem to be four slots, is that correct, Tony? And then so we.
There's three slots with four applicants, but three applicants confirmed the interview. Yes.
Who is not interviewing?
Uh Grace Pang did not respond to our requests for the interview.
Okay.
All right, so.
All right.
So I guess I, I'm not gonna make a motion, but I guess just a quick question, uh Tony, that. Because there's three interviews and three slots, I mean, we could theoretically just, just, you know.
Yeah.
Have been sort of a, a motion to just appoint all three, right? Um but uh, okay, that, I just wanted to get clarity. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, customer minutes. Um, if you or others are inclined, um that would be the time to. To speak up.
Well, well, let me ask you a question, Mayor. I, I guess, so I'm inclined to do that, but I guess what I'm curious about is. If I move to just appoint all three and we can determine who's gonna get the shorter term and such. Uh would that preclude, that would essentially preclude us from asking any questions of any of the, of the candidates. Is that your sense of?
I'm not sure it precluded. We, we could certainly, why don't we just go through the interviews anyway? And I, I, I think uh we probably are, end up in the same place.
All right.
Unless somebody wants to bypass the interviews and certainly we can consider doing that at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right then, we'll proceed. Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. Okay, so Louis is on, so he's just waiting for his first question.
Oh, great. Uh, Mr. Silver, uh we can't see you. Oh, there, we, we can't see you. Thank you for joining us. Uh, so thanks for taking the time uh and your willingness to serve uh the community. Could you just maybe uh, we'll open and give you an opportunity just to talk a bit about uh why you like to serve? Why you believe you could do a good job on this commission? And then we'll go right to questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You know, the answer to that question is frankly not that complicated. Uh, you know, I've, I've been in and around uh public life professionally for the last forty some odd years. Uh and I, I can't think of anything frankly more important these days than ethical behavior. And the conduct of ethical elections. Now, the reality is I was uh pointing to the short term last time, which was fine. Um, uh but half the purpose of the board is to adjudicate complaints. And to my knowledge, there has not been any. The, the good news there is that we use that time to create a work plan. Uh that certainly involves checking back with council uh on what we're doing. And you're looking at the procedures and getting ourselves ready to act. You know, I, I, I think the pandemics had something to do with that. And like everything else, that will uh. Um, get back uh hopefully to the way things were before the pandemic. You know, then we'll be back balancing the adjudicatory functions. But I guess from my end, you know, I've had two years to get myself ready. And, and yes, I would like to be reappointed. So that we can uh actually accomplish some of those things we talked about.
And thank you, Mr. Silver, and I neglected to thank you uh for your service for the last two years. Thank you for, for you wanting to step in.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, we are open now to questions from the council. Okay, I don't take that silence uh for anything negative. I suspect that might mean we might be content with you, your service.
I, you know, ma- Mr. Mayor, I was told once by a crusty old judge that if you were doing well, shut up and sit down. And don't snatch uh defeat from the jaws of victory.
I think we've talked to the same judges. Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Silver, thank you for your service. I, I guess, let me just ask you one question, since we have the benefit of your two years. Um, is there anything you think the council should know about how the commission works? Um, that would inform us about what you think we could do better in this process. Uh, there's changes you think we ought to be making.
You, you know, in, in terms of what we have been able to accomplish in the last two years. Which is, like I said, the study and setting out the work plan and doing all of that. I certainly, uh it, it may, it might make sense for us as a board. Uh sometime in the future, come back and report to the, to the council. But otherwise, adjudicatory function, you know, should really stay within uh, within the board to the extent possible.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh well, thank you for your service. We'll come back uh to you in a moment. I believe I see uh Ms. Nyakundi, and please forgive me, I hope I haven't mispronounced your name, have I?
No, you haven't, Mayor.
Oh, great. Uh wonderful. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Um, and uh what I'd like to do is just give you an opportunity to tell us a little bit about yourself. Uh why you, you'd like to serve on this commission and, and why you believe you'd be able to do a good job uh serving on this commission.
Well, my name's Isabella Nyakundi and um I've spent as about twenty-five years working in the corporate world. And also being um a community uh champion in the African-American agency center. Uh where I have been involved in creating a coding program. And that targeted low-income families. And I introduced companies like Google, Facebook, Intel, Oracle. To the community center where we have partners with, partnered with these uh giant uh technology companies. To uh volunteer their resources and uh finances to uh make this coding program successful. Now, I would like to serve in the community uh because um even in the corporate world, working as a software engineer. I've been able to be a leader in the um employee resource groups. Where I championed uh different groups like the Asian communities, African-American communities. Uh and Latino communities within the corporate world. And I also formed a leadership uh, a, a leadership group for uh Secret Valley tech companies. ERG groups. And our focus was how we could elevate communities. And why I wanna serve in this area is I haven't really ventured much into politics. Uh be, and, and being um serving uh, being a resident of District Ten. I feel like my skills of leadership in, in the community and in the corporate world. Will give me an opportunity to serve the community in this commission.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve as well as all of your past service in the community. Uh appreciate all that you've done, particularly at OXO, which is an important organization. Uh, okay, uh questions from the council. All right, I, I, I just have one question. It's the same question I had asked Mr. Silver two years ago. Uh I'd like to ask you, uh in this role, you're gonna be provided with campaign ethics. And lobbying ordinances in the San Jose Municipal Code. And said, okay, here are the rules. Um, and asked to apply the rules to the facts. And maybe some of those rules are rules you might disagree with. Um, how you, how you gonna sort of grapple with those situations where a situation comes to you and you think. Well, if I write in the rules, the rule would be different. Uh maybe the outcome of this whole situation would be different. But you've got this ordinance that you're applying. How, how do you deal with that conflict in your mind?
Um, when it comes to dealing with conflicts, I guess, uh I think that if there are rules that I need to follow. Uh then my internal conflict should not be, should not overrule uh what the ethics should be.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you, uh Ms. Nyakundi. Uh, all right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your willingness to uh serve. Uh, and for all you've done already for the community, we have uh one more candy I believe the council would like to hear from.
This is, this is Tony. That candidate does not appear to have signed on. Um, I have texted him multiple times. He had confirmed he was attending. Um but he is not signed on. I don't know if he had a technical problem or not.
Okay, so we can certainly go back to him should he manage to find a connection. I'd be willing to entertain a motionist to the two candidates who are before us now.
I'll move to approve uh Mr. Silver and Ms. Nyakundi to the term ending in twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, motion, Councilmember Menas, in a second. All right, uh.
And also a point order, Mayor.
Yeah.
You don't mind. Uh, I suspect this has come to the mind of other folks as well. So, so if uh Mr. Dama doesn't show and that third seat remains vacant, what, what, what do you do, uh Tony? You just go back out?
We could go, go, go back. Sorry, we could go back out. We could also reschedule him for another um date and time and see if we can get Grace in as well. Um, but we can also go back out and re-recruit.
Okay, I think, I think it'd be great. And I don't know if it needs to be part of the motion, but maybe try to get both of them in at some point to interview for that last slot.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. You're fully.
Yeah, I'd just like to add something about Grace. I understand that she's actually withdrawing her application. Uh that she did may not qualify for the, the appointment to which she's applying. She's a former intern in my office.
Okay.
Oh.
Apparently that's disqualifying, so.
That was not on her.
And it's not why she's not qualifying, yeah.
Okay, all right. Boy, last time any interns for you, Councilmember Foley. All right.
That was not disclosed on the, on the application. I didn't recognize the name, so.
Okay. All right, well, we'll sort all that out. In the meantime, we have a motion, Councilmember Menas. Let's vote.
Menas?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Renas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyakundi and Mr. Silver. Thank you for your willingness to serve or continue serving. And um uh I think we may take you up on your idea, Mr. Silver, about at some point uh re-huddling with members of the commission to better understand how we can. Uh, uh, address the, the challenges that we all collectively face in this front. Uh so thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh we do have, I'm sorry, there was a member of the public that wanted to speak and I'm just seeing the hand now and I, my mistake. I think Mr. Soto actually had his hand up before. Mr. Soto?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you for the question that you asked. As a member of the public that is going to be on the. Is, is going to have to have an implicit trust in whoever sits on these commissions. Within the next five years, there's going to literally be billions, tens of billions of dollars coming to this city. Okay, the amount of corruption that is going to surface within the context of, of local government. Is going to uh, it, it, it's. It, it, it's going to increase the amount of money that is flowing around to influence policy. So you're not welcoming Google into, into my community. You were also welcoming all of this uh, uh opportunity for that level of corruption. And so this board is critically important because these are the gatekeepers, the people that are gonna sit on. The people that are going to sit on this board have to know and understand that they're ethical and moral responsibility. I don't care about the legal responsibilities. I don't care about the rules. I don't care about the law. Because the law is, the law is what created Redline. You see, you see how corrupt the law is? The law is what permitted Redline. The law right now still permits slavery by virtue of the exception clause of the Thirteenth Amendment. Slavery is still legal in the United States. Make no mistake. You have to read the Thirteenth Amendment correctly. And so that's how, that's how subtle, that's how, that's because the ones that make the laws are the ones that created manifest destiny and brought that here to this land. And so when we're talking about the law, we also have to talk about something that is ethical and moral. If the moral and ethical universes are violated as a result of the law, then the law on its face is wrong. And that right there is the premise and basis for social justice movements.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. I want to ask any member of the council, based on the additional public testimony, if they'd like to change their vote. I don't believe that was Mr. Soto's intention, but I want to make sure we are explicit about it in case there's any change. All right, I don't see any member of the council indicating they'd like to do so, so we'll move forward. It's now a time, we'll, we have deferred items three point four for a week. So we're going to go to four point one, which is the Police Department Duty Manual Updates Report, and there is a presentation.
That was, uh, two weeks, Mayor, just to be clear for anybody listening.
Two weeks, thank you. All right.
Hi, Mayor. This is Lieutenant Jimenez of the SAU. Sorry, I can't get my video to work for some reason, but I want to thank you, Mayor Ricardo and council. Today, I'm joined by Crime Intelligence Analyst Angelie Montessa and Special Victims Lieutenant Brian Anderson and Family Violence Unit Lieutenant Rob Lang. The purpose of today's presentation is to provide an update on the duty manual sections which were revised or added related to Councilmember Arenas's August eighteen, twenty twenty memorandum. About eighteen duty manual sections were revised or added related to investigating, reporting, and providing advocacy in a trauma-informed manner. There are other duty manual sections currently being revised or added related to the auditor and city council recommendations, but today we'll be talking about the, the ones that we specifically mentioned in the memorandum. Without further ado, Angelie Montessa.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me this afternoon as directed by the city council with its approval of a memorandum from City Councilmember Arenas on August eighteenth, twenty twenty. This item updates the council on duty manual updates so that it better, it is better aligned to improve access to services for survivors. The duty manual amendments were meant to achieve the following two objectives. One, requiring officers to respond to and investigate all calls for service for domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault, and human trafficking for potential high lethality, and write a police report if a crime occurred. And two, ensuring a trauma-informed approach to an officer's response by providing survivors with access to an in-person advocate and/or a referral to such advocate by telephone, pamphlet, or resource card before the officer leaves the scene regardless if the survivor asks for the referral services. This report also includes updates towards the end of the presentation on related duty manual changes that do not fall under one of the above two categories. To address objective number one, requiring officers to respond to and investigate all calls for service for domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault, and human trafficking for potential high lethality, and write a police report if a crime occurred. Six sections with regards to domestic violence, physical child abuse, endangerment, or neglect, investigation of sex crimes, and sexual assault cases of the duty manual were amended to require officers to respond, investigate, and document all calls for service, to interview survivors in a private setting, and require investigation, and to specify using a multidisciplinary interview for juvenile survivors. Interview in those private settings and require investigation accordance with Section L six zero zero zero. Please note that Section L seven three zero seven Domestic Violence Reporting already contained a requirement for officers to respond to, investigate, and document all calls for service involving domestic violence. This has just been added here to display the responsiveness of sections of the duty manual. Section L six zero one eight Human Trafficking was added to the duty manual to require officers to respond, investigate, and document all calls for service. With regard to objective number two, ensuring a trauma-informed approach to an officer's response by providing survivors with access to an in-person advocate and/or referral to such advocate by telephone, pamphlet, or resource card before the officer leaves the scene regardless if the survivor asks for the referral services. Language was added to these six sections with regards to domestic violence, physical child abuse, endangerment, or neglect, investigations of sex crimes and human trafficking. The added language reminds officers of their individual responsibility to assist survivors through a trauma-informed approach, offer and explain resources to the survivor, conduct appropriate investigative tasks, make arrests when allowed by law, and properly document the incident whenever suspected. Domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault, or human trafficking is discovered or otherwise reported. Sections L seven three zero eight and L seven three one one explicitly discuss providing survivors with access to an in-person advocate and/or referral to such advocate by telephone, pamphlet, or resource card before the officer leaves the scene regardless if the survivor asks for the referral services. Alongside with objective number two, Sections L six zero zero nine Notification to Survivor and L six zero one zero Notification to Survivor Advocate discuss providing survivors with access to an in-person advocate and/or referral to such advocate by telephone, pamphlet, or resource card before the surva- officer leaves the scene regardless if the survivor asks for the referral service. Section L six zero one seven Advocacy Referrals was added to create a requirement for department members to provide advocacy referrals to survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence before leaving the scene. Sections R one five two six Domestic Violence Resource Card and R one five two seven Sexual Assault Report Receipt were modified to require officers to not only provide the cards to the survivor, but explain them as well. Section R one five two six point five Strangulation Resource Card was added to require officers to provide resources to survivors of strangulation and/or suffocation. Other duty-related, other related duty manual updates include Section A three zero zero three Duties of the CSO and A three zero zero seven Dispatchable Calls for CSOs that are being modified to expedite documentation of non-investigative sexual reports. Section L four one one three Gun Violence Restraining Orders and L five seven zero four Booking Firearms for Safekeeping Domestic Violence Incidents are being added to create a requirement for officers to inquire if any firearms are accessible and/or on the premise of a domestic violence incident. If there are, officers are directed to take custody of those firearms pursuant to a gun violence restraining order and book them for safekeeping. For Sections L six zero zero two point five Non-Investigative Report, it states that it is being created, but this section has been approved since March fifteenth meeting and has been added to establish a new means by which survivors may report a sexual assault while remaining anonymous. Section L seven three zero seven Domestic Violence Reporting were modified to implement a new intersectionality tool. Sections R one five three six DV Supplemental Template and DV Sexual Assault Human Trafficking Assessment Template and R one five three six point five Domestic Violence Field Reporting Guide and Sexual Assault Human Trafficking Assessment have been modified to update domestic violence forms for use of the intersectionality tool. Lastly, for next steps, SAU will follow up with updates responding to the auditor's report and Mayor Ricardo's request. Mayor Ricardo, on April sixth, the department thanks you for your suggestion about checking and adding in language on the county resource card to ensure that the rights on the card are fully informed by the law in reference to Penal Code six seventy-nine point zero four. In response, the doc, the department suggests revised articulation of the resource card so that the rights on the card are fully informed by the law as requested. The following steps have been implemented since the April sixth city council meeting. Completed steps: Lieutenant Anderson of the Special Victims Unit has spoken with the department's R and D unit and Supervising DA of the Sexual Assault Unit, Juan Tran, regarding six seventy-nine point zero four. Lieutenant Jimenez reached out to the Santa Clara County ADA James Gimin Shapiro, who is open to discussing how we can address this suggestion. It was discussed how placement will be on the resource card and further suggestions and solutions are being worked on. Next steps, SAU will bring forward a proposal to change and update language on the Santa Clara County Resource Card. The proposed language, which is subject to updates and change, can read as, "You are entitled to have a support person of your choosing present with you during any interviews by law enforcement, the district attorney's office, or the defense attorney. However, the support person may be excluded from an interview by law enforcement or the district attorney if law enforcement or the district attorney's office determine that the presence of that person would be detrimental to the purpose of the interview." Thank you for your time, and I now hand back over to city council for questions.
Thank you, Angelie. Thank you for your work and for the presentation. Let's go first to the community and then we'll come back. Paul Soto?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Arenas for bringing these amendments to these types of, uh, these types of, of, of situations and issues. I won't go over what happened to me recently. I, I, I think the council is already aware of what, what happened. I would like to say, though, that the officer upon arrival is exercising an enormous amount of power at that point. He, the officer determines through his own perceptions of what happened as to whether or not it's going to trigger these protocols. See, and that's the critical point. That's, that's the point of, of contact where the, the victim can know for a fact that a crime was committed because they are the ones that experienced it. However, when the officer drives up and he makes a subjective decision based on whatever it is that he decides at that moment, he can literally, he can literally determine that a crime did not, was not committed, thus not triggering these protocols. So that's an enormous amount of subjective power that the officer exercises at that moment, whereas the victim is still sitting there knowing for a fact what just happened. So if there could be some type of amendment in this, in, in, in the manual that states if the call is made for that reason, just the call, that the officer is still compelled to these protocols. See, because then, then, then when that's kind of a situation happens, the victim is not sitting there being revictimized by the police department because the police department is declaring at that moment, no, that didn't happen. Whereas the victim is sitting there with all of that emotion, everything, and it's compounded by what the officer just, what the officer just decided. So I think that's a very critical point to discuss here. Thank you.
Thank you. Blair Beekman?
Hi, thank you. I hope you can have a bit of patience for about forty seconds here with a short introduction before going into this item. A thank you to City Manager David Sykes and city government staff as I feel they've tried to make choosing a new police chief a process that elected officials in everyday community have a shared equal part in the final decision-making of a new San Jose police chief. And what I think can help with beginning new efforts, there can be towards community unity at this time. I hope you can think about and learn how to openly describe some reasons why Officer Anthony Mata from SJPD was chosen before Officer Larry Scherrato from Pittsburgh PD. And from this, I also hope it can become easier to want to describe to the community how an insider status of Anthony Mata compared to an outsider status of Larry Scherrato actually factored into decision-making. To conclude, I hope I can be written to about this subject and these ideas can be considered and how it can help develop good community practices and a shared good future we are all trying to build for the future of San Jose. Thank you for your patience, that little introduction. For this item, it seems really important that, uh, to, to consider the peer review program and how it can really help police officers discuss, you know, situations of domestic violence cases after the fact. You know, Paul Soto had his own incident, actually. He needed help afterwards, and the police officer may not have did his job as well as he could have. He, a peer review program afterwards for even Paul's situation would really help. And, and for police officers, not just in domestic violence, but to really learn how to open up with each other and have, you know, a counseling set space, you know, and to create that safe space is really important at this time, and I hope we really learn how to work on that subject. Good luck to domestic violence issues and how that can help other parts of the police department in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Perla Flores?
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to thank firstly, Councilmember Arenas for your continued commitment to ensuring that survivors of gender-based violence have their rights upheld. The Domestic Violence Advocacy Consortium opposes the inclusion in the victim resource card. The language around ensuring support persons can be excluded from an interview to ensure that survivors are encouraged to bring an advocate to feel comfortable when they're attending interviews with law enforcement prosecutors. And so that really is not a right that survivors have to have somebody excluded. So I think that it's under the purview of law enforcement prosecutors to ask a support person to lead the interview if they're being disruptive in a way or the law enforcement don't feel it's appropriate to have a support person there. So including that language in the resource card that's really intended to encourage survivors to better understand their rights and avail themselves of those rights, including having advocates and support persons with them during interviews would have a, I believe, a chilling effect and survivors accessing resources. And it might also be confusing to survivors to understand when it's appropriate to bring an advocate and might actually cause them to not be able to connect to that resource. So we really encourage the removal of that, not including that language in the victim resource card because again, it would really be up to law enforcement or prosecutors to exercise the right that they have to exclude support persons. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Thanks to members of the community supporting these efforts in many ways. Councilmember Arenas, thank you for your efforts to lead this effort. Councilmember Arenas, you might be on mute right now. I think you are muted.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arenas, I think you have a bad connection.
Me now?
Councilmember Arenas, I think you've got a.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Yep.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Much better.
Okay. You, you can hear me now? Okay.
Councilmember Arenas, again.
So I'm, I'm going to command, I'm on my third device, so I apologize. Please let me know if, um,
There you go.
if you don't hear me.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
No? You're always doing great at the beginning, then we lose you.
Thank, um, our police department. Oh, no.
Councilmember Arenas, I appreciate you're trying a lot of different devices right now.
Oh, my gosh. Can you, can you hear me now? Or is that terrible?
Why don't we come back to you in a minute or two? Hopefully, your device situation will be by then. Councilmember Sparson?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been having technical issues today, so I, as well, so I'm, I'm, I'm sure it's not fun for Councilmember at NS. I actually wanted to acknowledge the replacement memo that Councilmember at NS submitted along with the rest of our signatures with, and that, I believe, addresses the, the concern from the caller about having, I'm, I'm having issues as well.
You can hear me.
An advocate in there. And so that's the memo. Advocate in there. And so I, that's the memo. I don't know if council member at N S. I I don't, I know she's a huge leader on this item, and so I'm happy to move the replacement memo. Um, but I don't want to take that away from her. So I just want to acknowledge uh, council member at N S for leading this effort over the past couple, several years and with the support of council members Carrasco, Davis, Foley and myself um, to to get us to this point, and I'm sure if, and stop me if council member at N S is if her um, audio is working. But I also would like to thank Chief Mata and the San Jose Police Department for their leadership and bringing these changes in the police department's duty manual forward. Um, and so these changes are huge and really important in our response to sexual assault, domestic violence, human trafficking and child abuse. Taking a trauma-informed approach, informing survivors of advocates and resources, improving our processes, and the many other changes to the duty manual is taking a significant step forward to ensuring that we are not revictimizing survivors of these horrific crimes. The number of sexual assaults recorded have nearly tripled over the past ten years. And with this disturbing trend, the women on the council have shown that we will not just sit by. And I want to also um, underscore that this is one aspect of a much larger movement to better and improve our response. And we, as a council, have spoken loud and clear that we are committed to improving this response by making the implita- implementation of the Sexual Assault Bill of Rights a priority during our priority setting session. Um, and I'd like to thank my colleagues um, for their support and um, I'll make the motion if council member at N S is not able to, but um, I'd like to leave that to
Hi, council members.
Okay, I'll stop. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me? Uh, mayor is
Yeah, we're able to hear you. Yeah.
Okay, great. I'm so sorry. I was sweating bullets right now. Because this, this uh, this is just so, so important and we're at a culmination really where I think uh, I wanted to uh, thank the police department for, for all the work that they've been doing of the last couple of years. Um, uh, we have seen such a huge difference, and I think it has a lot to do with uh, the leadership. Um, and I'll say that while um, uh, Deputy Chief Tyndall was our acting uh, chief, um, he made some progress as well. So I want to recognize this recent uh, contributions as well as our, our chief. Um, as soon as he came on board, um, he was supporting us and supporting this, this effort. Um, actually, before he, he even accepted the position of chief um, as well as Lieutenant Anderson, Lieutenant Jimenez, the Lieutenant um, or Sergeant Lombardo. All the, all of the folks in the investigative units have done just some wonderful work. Um, one, taking a look at systemic changes in order to make sure that we have the best outcomes for our survivors when these um, crimes happen. Um, and these kinds of system improvements, hopefully in the end, we will see a, a higher closure rate. We will see survivors um, wanting to pursue um, charges. We, we don't know what, what the system improvements are going to help us do, but we have uh, been able to take a look um, back for a year in terms of one system improvement, and that is the intersectionality tool um, that has been implemented since last January, and we've seen how we can better identify um, victims of sexual assault when officers are responding to an incident that involves intimate partner violence. And so I, I'm, I, I trust that what we're doing will continue to help improve not only the identification of survivors and better, better suit, to pursue their need, to better support them. And and identify the, the investigative unit that they should, that their uh, crime should be in. But also that we are also going to support our youngest of those survivors and um, I've said this before and I'm always alarmed. I don't want to, I don't want to sound, I don't want it to sound um, like a sensational comment, but I also don't want it to um, be something that you've already heard over and over for me. But the, the, the largest number of survivors in our city are under the age of twelve. And then the second group is under the age of sixteen. And so for me, this represents this pipeline in the same way that we see when, when our, um, our school systems fail um, are brown and black uh, boys and girls, that there is a pipeline directly to a prison. This is another pipeline for our young ladies and for our young uh, men who are survivors of sex crimes to lead into um, sex work, uh, domestic.
Cause my Renes, I think we just lost you again. Councilmember Renes. Okay. Why don't I ask a question or two that I had coming and then when councilmember Renes is able to rejoin us, we'll uh, we'll bring her back into the conversation. Um, I, I want to thank everyone for their hard work. I know Councilmember Renes and her team in particular, but uh, everybody in the police department for the work in Lieutenant Airson and everybody. Lieutenant Jimenez, forgive me, and, and, and all the folks who have uh, been digging in on these um, very specific changes to duty manual that will help really sharpen our approach to sexual assault, domestic violence. And I really want to also particularly call out something that maybe may not get much notice, which um, around the uh, the gun violence restraining order. I, I think those changes are going to be really important. So thank you for that. I, I had a question though about the recommendation. Uh, number one, um, which relates to requiring officers respond to investigate all cars for service for domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault. And then the, the sentence ends, if a crime occurred. And I, the question would be, would, wouldn't that be better stated if a crime is suspected?
Yes, so Mayor Licar, I, we appreciate your comments and um, we definitely think that we're open to your suggestion and, and making the duty manual reflect what we think would be better. So I'll, I'll take that note and um, we can revise the duty manual to reflect what you just said.
I appreciate that, Lieutenant. I know that's a very small um, change in terms of verbiage, but I, I think you know uh, what a difference it makes in terms of direction because I know there will undoubtedly situations, as we know, are very frequently, these contexts where there's a he said, she said. And we want, I think what we want is we want reports to be taken regardless of the conclusion that the officer reaches, as long as there is a suspected crime that the report would be taken. Is, is that right, Lieutenant?
I, I agree, Mayor, and um, I wrote a note and we will, we will look into that and get that changed appropriately.
Hey, wonderful. Thanks, Lieutenant. Okay, um, we're going to come back and check in with customer Renes to see if her audio is back.
Mayor. I'm back. Uh, thank you so much for, for um, being patient uh, with my devices. Um, my attention. So I, I wanted to, uh, my, I know that I, my point that I was uh, hoping to make is that there's this pipeline that we want to interrupt for our sexual assault survivors that are children so that they don't land in any of the areas that I talked about, which is sex trafficking, um, human trafficking, intimate partner violence or sex work. Um, and so this is, this is where all of the, the system improvements, this is that's our North Star. That's what is guiding me in terms of ensuring that we have the best system improvements. And so I appreciate uh, the, the suggestion you just made. I think it makes the world of difference. Um, how we phrase uh, things when, when it comes to our survivors. And so o- on that point, I know I heard um, Perla Flores um, talk about, and I think her consortium had um, looked at our original memo that came out on Friday, which is the memo that I, the rest of my um, colleagues for signing on uh, with me. And we made a, we made a change um, uh, mayor uh, today so that we actually didn't want to include the section that talks about um, having, having um, a police office or having the, the language in section two, uh, six, seven, nine point zero four included in, in the um, survivor um, card that, or resource card. Um, because it, one, it'll create confusion. Um, and two, it really, it reinforces that the lack of control of that survivor has situation. And that this decision is being taken, taken out of their hands and into the hands of some uh, the DA or another officer. Um, and so I think that there is already law that, that um, uh, designates that. Um, so I don't know if, I don't know if it really makes a difference for us to have that on, on the survivor card. And so I know that uh, Lieutenant Jimenez, you said that you had already included that piece and, and actually I heard you last week, uh, Mayor, uh, when you expressed that. And so that's one of the reasons why I included in the memo. But I, I actually got a lot of calls from stakeholders um, who were going to submit a letter of opposition for that particular item. And so what I said is, listen, you don't need to submit a letter of opposition. We're absolutely open uh, to, to framing things in the way that you see is a respectful manner for our survivors. And so I actually um, have a replacement memo that takes that language out of our memo. Um, and so I hope that, that we can also just discuss that and reconsider uh, not including that in our resource uh, card so that we can also re- continue to respect the, the, the input from our stakeholders. It wasn't just one agency. She parallel called in, but she represents a consortium of, of uh, agencies that work with sexual assault and domestic violence survivors. So with, with that, um, I do have a couple of questions. And I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible, but I know that we already asked some of these questions ahead of time, so I'm not going to um, go over uh, any of this, but I do have um, just one, one area of interest that I wanted to bring up. And this is the um, the trauma-informed training uh, that that is mentioned in this memo. Or referenced in this memo. And um, one of the aspects of that trauma-informed training that I, that I've uh, think is really important and is missing is that we take a look at who is our, our largest um, victim uh, in, in terms of the population and the age. And that is children. And so we, we need to make sure that we pivot the training uh, to ensure that we have uh, some type of expert or subject expert that talks about um, the, the maybe acute and chronic trauma in victims who are children and how to and maybe our officers can receive some instruction on some of those warning signs um, that are very specific just to children that have to do with either sexual or physical abuse. And this is one of the things that I haven't seen, although um, uh, Acting Chief Tyndall, when he was, uh, or former Acting Chief Tyndall, Deputy Tynder, uh, Chief Tyndall now um, committed to this, and I, and I hope that I can have the same commitment from the police department and from our chief and from folks who are working on this so that we can really integrate this um, and continue to move through the training with this asp- new aspect in mind. Now, trauma-informed is, is, is part of what they're already going to provide to their uh, I think they've already done this with their investigative units and now the, the general um, police officers. And so can I just get some feedback on, on where that's at?
Councilmember Renes, thanks for the question. So to respond, I spoke to Greg Lombardo, who's the lieutenant, kind of going over the trauma-informed training. The Bureau of Investigations has been trained. A lot of our uh, support staff have been trained, uh, the non-s sworn side. The, the portion that's left to train, I believe, is the uh, the Bureau Field Operations, the patrol officers, which is more difficult to get release time for them to actually be attending training, especially during COVID and the impact that it's had on our organization. So I believe that's the last component that um, Lieutenant Lombardo is going to train the Bureau Field Operations patrol side of that fence. And that should be starting in May, I believe.
And um, Lieutenant, do you know uh, who is the subject matter expert that they're using or how they're integrating, or how they're modifying their training to include child and youth experiences?
Councilmember Renes, I, I apologize, but this is the first time I've heard of that, so I don't know the answer to that question. However, I can look into that for you and get your response back.
Wonderful. I, I really appreciate that. Um, uh, otherwise, I, I think that's the only area that I, I still had um, pending in terms of concerns. Um, uh, I, I want to also, I, I I just want to end by thanking uh, councilmember Asparza for moving my memo um, last year. Uh, I had gotten sick, fires, and so I couldn't uh, sit through the rest of the meeting. Uh, and, and so she moved this memo, and I really want to thank uh, her for it. Um, and, and, and for all of my uh, council colleagues, uh, councilmember Carrasco, councilmember Davis, councilmember Foley, councilmember Asparza, uh, for all your support on issues that impact our families, that impact our children um, and that are gender-specific. Um, you've shown me um, endless support. And so I, I look forward to the conversation that we're going to have at the end of this month on the twenty ninth with the county so that we can continue to learn um, about their improvements in their systems and that we can share ours as well. Um, and, and see all of this uh, hopefully within a year, uh, see some of the fruit of, of our labor in terms of system improvements. So with that, I will move my memo. Okay.
Thank you. Motion and second. Any other comments on this item? Okay. Appreciate uh, the concerns of advocacy organizations in response to comments I made last week and the memory animators relatively sound on this issue, and so I'm happy to support the motion. I um, just would offer this. I, I'm not an expert in this area, but I have worked in it for a few years in it, and it seems to me that there is a problem if there's a mismatch between the law and what we're telling people the law is. And my experience, the very worst thing you can do to anyone who is a survivor of trauma is to lie to them. And, and that's, I know that's nobody's intention. I know that's not what anybody wants. Uh, but that was the desire, that was why I raised the issue last week is because it is already a hugely traumatizing experience to be dealing with all these emotional issues again through the criminal justice system uh, for any survivor. Uh, it is daunting, it's intimidating, and that creates huge issues of mistrust. And uh, it seems to me the best thing we can do is to eliminate any risk that someone will be told one thing and they will see actions that reflect something else. And so that is that is my primary motivation. I think uh, I'm, I'm guessing that our San Jose P D will work with the advocacy organizations and come up with whatever the best formulation is uh, that addresses the concern. I don't see any reason why I should micromanage the issue, so I'm going to stay out of it. I just happen to think it's really important uh, that everybody have sort of clear expectations. So um, we'll, we'll leave it there. Uh, councilmember Renes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I, I agree, and that's why I, I had it in my memo. Um, like I said, I only replaced it when I, I heard from the stakeholders otherwise. Um, but I, I'm hoping that maybe we can take this question to this joint meeting for the county where our DA will be there. Um, and, and other representatives from other segments of, who represent the different segments of the process a survivor goes through. And, and maybe they can help identify uh, where in that process, this is uh, something that we can make clear to um, uh, to survivors, because I Because I think you're absolutely right. The more information that they have and the more they know in terms of their rights, the better. So, so I'm, my commitment is to continue to take this to our, our joint meeting. And that way we can have a well-identified time in the process.
Okay, great. Thank you. I agree. It's certainly fine. Let's let, let's let the experts figure it out and we'll move forward. Okay. Let's vote on the motion then from Councilmember Renes.
Jimenez? Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Locardo?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to skip ahead because we're not yet at four o'clock. So eight point one are actions related to the Park Avenue reconfiguration project. There's a presentation. I'm assuming Nancy, someone from Nancy's team.
Yes, Mayor, we should have Nancy.
If not, we can skip and come right to it.
Or Kevin Ice?
I could call the 10.2 and come right back if that would help.
Looks like that would help.
Okay, let's go to 10.2. That's a site development permit for the property located 282 South Market Street, also known as Block Eight. And I want to apologize as a belatedly submitted memorandum from me that you'll all see hopefully on your, hopefully that's online posted now. And I know we have the applicant here and there should be a presentation, I believe, from staff.
That's correct, Mayor.
I know there's been some skipping around the agenda that may have everybody.
Yeah, Robert, are you on to do the presentation?
Aye.
Yes, yes, I am on. I'm going to share my screen in a minute, please.
Thank you.
Welcome, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you see the slides, please?
Yes.
Okay. Let me make sure. I want to make sure I see.
You have it on the edit.
Mayor?
Yes?
Were you trying to do the Park Avenue item?
Yeah, we'll come right back to Nancy.
I see. Thank you.
Robert's got it and we'll come right back to you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. The item before you, H nineteen zero three three, is a site development permits located at 282 South Market Street. The site development permit is to allow the construction, the construction and operation of an eighteen-story building with approximately twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-one square feet of commercial retail and approximately four hundred and eighty-two thousand square feet of office. An alternate parking arrangement and a downtown design guideline exception on approximately one point four nine goss acre site. The alternate parking arrangement consists of regular tandem and mechanical parking lifts. And the downtown design guideline exception has to do with our standard four point four six A based on site constraints. As you can see, the general plan land use designation for the site is downtown. And then the zoning is, is within the downtown primary commercial zone in district. And EIR, a supplemental EIR for the downtown strategy twenty forty, EIR was prepared for the project. And it was circulated for public review between November twenty-third, twenty twenty and January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The EIR found that the project will result in a significant unavoidable impact to shade and shadow. Therefore, a statement of overriding considerations is required for the shade and shadow impact on Plaza de Cesar Chavez. The city received only three written comment letters during the public review period. The comments were in regards to a bus stop and public transit improvement as well as groundwater. These comments have been fully responded to. And they also did not result in new impacts and or recirculation of the draft EIR. And all the documents and responses to the comments are available on the project's website. So staff has two recommendations. The first has to do with environmental impact. Staff is asking you to adopt a resolution certifying the supplemental EIR to the downtown strategy twenty forty environmental impact report and making certain findings concerning significant impact mitigation measures, alternatives, and adapting a related mitigation and monitoring report, mitigation, monitoring and reporting program in accordance with CEQA. The second recommendation is for the city council to adopt a resolution approving the site development permits subject to conditions to allow the construction of an eighteen-story commercial building with approximately twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-one square feet of commercial retail and approximately four hundred and eighty-two thousand square feet of commercial office. An alternate parking arrangement and a downtown design guideline exception on an approximately, approximately one point four nine goss acre site. This concludes staff presentation. The applicant is here and staff is also available for any questions that the city council may have.
Thank you. And representing the applicants, Mr. Tercini and Mr. Schenauer.
Good afternoon, Mayor Locardo and Council. My name is Rob Tercini and I'm the Vice President of Development for the Sobrato Organization, representing the project in front of you today. After many years of owning this site, we are excited to be here and look forward to bringing this unique and high-quality asset to the downtown core. I do want to take a brief moment to thank staff for all their hard work over the last couple of years to bring us in front of you. With me on the call, I have Michael O'Boyle and Claire Yematani with Archtectonica, the architects for the project. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd love for them to give just a brief minute walkthrough of the project and I can turn it over to them now.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for your time today and for allowing us to present the project at this well-known corner on West San Carlos Street. We'll start next slide, please. So we'll just begin with a plan view showing the building in its context next to Cesar Chavez Park, across the street from the St. Clair and near the original Joe's. Next slide, please. So moving from the context, we have a bird's eye view of the project here, which shows the relationship of the curved forms of our proposed building with the Fairmont and the distance. You can also see the varying heights of the roof gardens and the towers. Next slide, please. Here is the prominent view of the project. We envision an iconic corner building composed of four sculptural glass forms, each articulated with shingled glass facades that cascade down and interact with the base, which is more orthogonal and representative or reminiscent of the historic context. Next slide, please. Moving along to the, to the street level, this is just a floor plan showing that our intent is to provide as much active use, if not all active use on the street fronting facades. In orange, you can see the retail and in purple, you can see the pedestrian access to the lobbies for the project. Next slide. And this is a detailed view of the facade from the street level, showing the retail facade and showing the glass cascading down. Next slide. Street view of the building next to the historic Montgomery. Next slide. And then finally showing the building at nighttime with the lighting that we hope will contribute to the skyline of San Jose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Tercini, anything further?
No, that's it for me. We have the full team on just in case you have any questions. They're all listening in.
The designs look great. Thank you to the Sobrato Organization for their investment in our city. Let's go to members of the community and then we'll come back to the council. Paul Soto.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sobrato gave an interview to Leonardo Castaneda in the Mercury News last year. In that interview, they were talking about Stanford University being the largest private landowner in the county. Stanford University is the largest private landowner in the county. And when they interviewed Sobrato, he was very candid, which, which surprised me. A, a man of that prominence and that wealth and that connected to real estate was very honest. And what he stated was that the person that's living here now, he's not going to be able to afford to live here. This is just a fact. He, you, you're not, because what is going to happen? And so he, I don't know if he meant that to, like, I don't even know if he was aware of, like, really what he was saying, what he was implying. So I was listening to pretty much what he wasn't saying. And what he wasn't saying was how much he knew. He, he had actual knowledge that the entire city was going to accommodate those four hundred thousand people that are going to come live here in San Jose that are not from here. That is an enormous, and this is the indicator of that. This, this is the actual concrete example of what is going to happen culturally, psychologically, and, and to, to the people that are coming here, because everything that's being built is for them. It's not for the native populations. We are going to literally be, you need to go. It's, it's going to get so, um, there's going to be such a squeeze because of poverty that's going to actually be created. And the statement that Sobrato made confirms that. Because that is a man that has knowledge of what was going on here in the city. And he made a statement like that in last year's newspaper as quoted by Leonardo Castaneda of the Mercury News.
Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it does look like a good project. Pretty much everything Mr. Schreiner is involved in, as far as aesthetically, is really nice. And they're good at that. I want to reflect what the other person's saying, though. When these projects do come forward, you know, some of us think we're going to be in on the thing or whatever. And that due to our own fault or somebody else's fault, I blame myself for my particular predicament. You, you wind up having to change your entire life at sixty, having to move and having to find a new place and, and which is fine, but it does make you realize I'm going to have to move out of the city of San Jose. And it's pretty clear that the city of San Jose, not you ladies and gentlemen in particular, but economically speaking, does not want people like me here or policemen, teachers, firefighters, people who work, they don't want us here. They want people who have money. And if you look at what drives us out, it's traffic, crime, cost of living, taxes, roads that tear up your car. It's not because you're not trying to do something about it because you are. It's just frustrating. And when we're a complaint-driven organization, you know, the city says make a complaint and you can't even get people to listen to that. It gets really frustrating. And you know, I'm not one to get angry and accuse and threaten. That's not really my ilk. I would probably be better off if I was like that. But it is a, a nice building, but the, the support systems like VTA and bike riding, we don't even know how many people ride downtown. We don't know how many people ride VTA. There's no, and there's no follow-through with that. And a lot of us are left holding the bag, you know? And I could tell you, it'll break your heart. Not that that matters, but it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, let's come back to council. Councilmember Peralas?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you as well to the applicant. This has long been a service lot that certainly it's been in the city's interest to want to see developed. And I would say that after years of really trying to get to a place where we're at today, where we can allow our professional planning department to work with applicants on sites like this to, to come forward as site developments is, is truly, I think, extraordinary. And, and I just want to say thank you to our city staff as well for your work on this. Mayor, as you mentioned, your memo did come out a little late. And so in looking at it, I, I don't seem to have any issues. I know we've talked about this before with other developments and really the, the ability to sort of develop as you're going higher in, in your development, coming out and, and over some of the public space. My only question to city staff would be, do you see in regards to the mayor's memo, are there any sort of immediate concerns? I know you were mentioning something around the long of fifteen feet, Mayor. And I'm just imagining things that, you know, what I'm seeing up in the air and, you know, lamp posts or streetlights. And I, so I'm just, I don't know. I'm curious from, from staff's perspective. Is there any immediate concern from, from the mayor's memo if we were to move that forward?
I'll let staff kind of jump in here. You know, I, I looked at it. I don't see any immediate concerns. I, you know, I think there's probably some work to do around kind of what that height would be in terms of, you know, encroachment with no limitation. Certainly something that, you know, we, we understand it, you know, part of the issue that we have right now with encroachments is that they are required to be revocable, which is completely impractical for constructing of the building. So I think that's the work that we need to look at. Do we have Jay on or anyone from Public Works that wanted to weigh in in addition to what I've said? Or Robert?
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Robert Mainford, Director with Planning. From a planning standpoint, we do not see any problem with looking into those three options that the mayor has recommended. I, I think at the end of the day, it will all result in changes to the code. So we need to look at it closely with Public Works Department as well as the City Attorney's Office and then see what resources will be available to have that done.
And I do, I do see Matt on and Jay. So you guys want to weigh in?
Yeah, Matt Kinnon, Director of Public Works. I don't really have anything more to add that hasn't already been said by yourself or Robert. And we can continue to look into it.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, my, my main concern was just the fifteen feet. And so, Mayor, happy to, I don't know if you wanted to elaborate on anything, but I'm happy to, to move your memo.
Thank you, Councilmember. And that's with the staff recommendation for the project to move forward.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like just to, I think a significant number of the council and the public probably isn't aware of what this issue is. So I just want to at least lay it out if either Mr. Tercini or Mr. Schenauer wants to speak to this at all. This has happened now, I think, three times in the last half decade where we've had projects that may have some intrusion or I guess as it's called, encroachment into the public right-of-way. And by that, we mean into the airspace, perhaps many feet well above where the public could actually use the public right-of-way. And the original design, I believe, on this had some modest amount of encroachment because of a twisting design in the architecture. And did you want to speak to that at all in terms of what your experience was?
I'm, I'm happy to just give a little color. You know, I think that going back a few years, we were trying to come up with a, a unique design for the building. And, and what we proposed with staff was to come out and twist the buildings and, and encroach out into the right-of-way. And it allowed the buildings to read as four, even though it's one building. That said, you know, I think after running into what, what Mr. Sykes suggested is the issue, which is the revocable language, we went back and redesigned and actually still have the same design element. So we were successfully able to, to redesign the building in a way that we're, we're very proud of. And we just lost some square footage. But the overall design, you know, we're not compromising anything. But that said, you know, I think in the future would be helpful to, to find a path for, for projects to allow some level of encroachment.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And appreciate the, you know, the willingness of the architects and everybody to work together to, to see how we could get to the finish line. I appreciate everybody's doing their best. City staff is doing their best within the constraints we have in the code. And City Attorney and everybody, I, I think the challenge is that we have constraints, at least in the view of me and I think of, of some others who really would love to see more ambitious architecture and design in our city, that we're really chaining ourselves down a bit. And we are already so severely constrained by the height limits in our airport that really forces the somewhat squatty, boxy skyline that you see before you today. That, you know, the ability for architects to get more creative and building out is going to be really essential if we're going to see something other than the boxy, squatty design that predominates. So we, we would like to see greater creativity. We also think there may be really opportunities for public benefit in significant ways as well. If there's folks being able to sit down at the table and then obviously bring that before the public for everyone to take a look. So anyway, I appreciate everyone's efforts and collaboration on this. And hopefully we can get to a place where we no longer have these many-month delays over whether or not a particular over whether or not a particular building design happens to lean a little too far one way or another. We can, we can all move forward. All right, any other comments on this? All right, let's vote then on Councilmember Prowlus's motion.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Prowlus.
Hi.
Owen. Cohen.
Crossco.
Hi.
Thank you. Crossco. Davis.
Hi.
Ms. Barza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Oli.
Hi.
Mayhand.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Licardo.
Hi.
Going back to Crossco. Markie Thompson, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to item 8.1, which are actions related to Park Avenue reconfiguration project. Nancy.
Mayor and council, thank you very much. Apologize for you guys went so fast.
Nobody ever accuses us of that.
I know. Thank you very, very much. We are here today to talk about items that are related to both Park Avenue and the J. Paul project for City View. I'm here with Kevin Ice, who's the Senior Manager in Real Estate, Cameron Day, who's the Deputy City Attorney, and Matt Kano, who's our Partner in Crime, Nancy Klein, Office of Economic Development. The recommendations, and I think on this item, we hold the the unfortunate title of the longest recommendation ever is to approve a conditional summary vacation of the Park Avenue right of way for what is roughly 14,000 square feet of the project area. And I'm going to show you a map, which is much easier in a second, and adopt four resolutions of necessity for the city to be able to acquire the land. Kevin, will you put up the Park Avenue slide, please? The the design build out of what part there? So what this project and what we're trying to to seek approval on is the ability to develop what is a a new model for streets, a new way for us to create place. And so the accomplishment of the 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 actions today will both allow us to build out. And Kevin, can you go out back to the plan? Thank you. It will allow us to build out the section between Market Street and Almedin. And in addition, the use of this land is that on top it will be Park Avenue used by pedestrians. Underneath, a good portion or the bulk of this land would be used for garage for the City View project. Can you go to the next slide, Kevin? Back up there. So basically, the overview is that there's a 14,348 square foot of property. The developer does not own the property. And it must be acquired to complete and comply with project approvals. The city owns roughly 8,000 square feet of the property. And roughly little more than 6,000 square feet of the property is owned by four participants or property owners. And it's the heirs of those properties we were seeking to acquire the land from. In the process of working with the developer, two heirs were found from the Villar and de Caveda families, and two heirs were not found. So we would need to move forward through an eminent domain process because of the age of the ownerships. The the land holdings were from the 1800s. And in order for the title company to ensure the property, we have to go through eminent domain to have a clear title. So there you see the Smith family and the Christian family are, the heirs are not found. And the the dollars that are generated will go into a state trust instead of going to family members because there we couldn't find any. And the Villar and the Caveda families, their descendants will be the recipient of the dollars that are derived from the sale. Can you go to the next slide? This busy picture gives you a sense that the red brick areas, that is the roughly 8,000 square feet that the city owns. And then the other hashed areas, which are difficult to see, are those lands owned by the four families, the descendants that we were speaking about. And Kevin, if you can go back. So I think we covered everything on this. And then Kevin, you can go forward the next two. So the next, the the current actions, again, before we get to future actions, is again to approve a conditional summary vacation. And that once the conditions are met for the need and necessity and we move through the next, the eminent domain process, then we will need to come back to you with the purchase and sales as well. So there is the current set of recommendations that both account for the eminent domain transactions. And it should be noted that J. Paul is paying for all city costs. The city is not, general fund is not incurring any costs for the associated actions. And then the future actions, there we go, are to negotiate the parcels and the purchase and sale with the Villar and de Caveda property owners. And then work to solidify the amount through appraisals for the state trust to be paid. The city will assemble then all of the roughly 14,000 square feet of the property. And that will be sold to City View pending the vacation. With that, I'm sure there may be questions and staff is here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to members of the community first, and then we'll come back to the council. Paul Soto.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask any member of the council if they can please compel Senora Klein to articulate the exact date that the property transferred into their hands in the 1800s. And this is critically important because the history of San Jose, how these people acquired this property was by the decapitations of Native Americans and the scalping of Native Americans. $5 per head, 25 cents per scalp. Senor Tabarcio Vazquez, March 19th of 1875, was hung. They sold tickets. It was an affair. It was a big, big, big affair. Let's hang the pendulum Mexican right downtown. This is how the wealth was acquired. This is how it was built. That's why I'm telling, you're not going to avoid the issue. You're not going to avoid the issue of this San Jose's racist past. Because I live with it today. The the poverty that I'm experiencing right now is a direct result of manifest destiny and everything that happened in this city from that point in time. That's why the city must take a stand and acknowledge the racist deprivation of ancestral wealth that was deprived of Mexicans simply because I am Mexican. That was my fault. I was born Mexican. I was born Chicano here in San Jose. And that right there relegated me to a lifetime of school to prison pipeline, of prisons, of jails, of homelessness, of being abused by officers. I mean, this needs to be reckoned with. And this district, especially District 3 and District 6, must accept responsibility, accountability for rectification, reckoning, and reparations for these.
Mr. Soto, okay, thank you. Mr. Peekman.
Hi, thank you. This Park Avenue plan, I guess it's a part of your 2040 ideas. And, you know, I'm interested how there can be some kind of low level high rises from Park Avenue all the way up to, you know, say like 12th, 12th, 12th Street, 12th to 18th or 20th Street. And, you know, I I think that is the the key about how to decide about the future of serious downtown high rises in the in the airport flight path. And I'm hoping this Park Avenue situation and the 2040 plans, they can relieve that tension of of this continual push of super skyscrapers along the airport runway system and the south flow system. And, you know, I think if you address the Park Avenue issue, if you address housing and from 12th Street up to 18th with low level high rises that are what, 100 feet high, 120 feet high? I think that can very much address much better, you know, the future needs of San Jose, you know, and hopefully can do it just as well in comparison to these. I don't know, you you're just in a fantasy world with these high rises along the airport, it seems like, is my feeling. And I I'm I'm worried about that. And I hope you can learn to talk about in practical terms what will be the future of San Jose and its and building upwards. And 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 what, you know, was mentioned earlier today, how do we build low income housing out of that? And how can it be a place for everyone in the future of San Jose and not just the elites? Thank you.
Thank you. Brian.
Sorry, it took me, thank you again. And again, I can't go into details about a particular situation. I wish I could, but I can't. But it should be evident that properties and deeds aren't simple. And you to try to settle something takes longer, especially if you're the person doing it and you're sick and you're trying to take care of your lots of physical issues. And, you know, you don't think about trying to clear something or trying to, you're, the detail that the city council or the city staff had to go through with finding these people, you had to go through all of these rings. It took time. And that's something I think should, it doesn't apply to people like me or the other two gentlemen that we're talking. It has to be done or you're, you know, it's held against you and and legally it can. And even, you know, contractually. But we're people too. It seems to be that your personhood shouldn't be measured by the size of your wallet. I I don't believe any of you ladies and gentlemen feel that way, but this world sure does. I mean, with a deep passion, it's passionate about that idea. The last person that ran the White House proved that fact beyond belief. And so what you're doing is good. But the city had lawyers, it had staff, it had people that could take the ball and run with it, and it had help. A lot of us in those world don't have any help at all. And if we ask, it is viewed as evil. And some of us has taken a long time to try to figure out how to get around that. Because we're not the kind of people who like to raise up. But I could just tell you that the city's city staff did a good job on complaining all those locks and stuff. They had help. Some of us don't. Thank you.
Mike. Mike Sotegren.
Yes, hi, council. This is Mike Sotegren, Preservation Action Council, San Jose. It's a good thing you've got the city superhero Nancy Klein sorting this out. Glad for that. We have some questions about the origins of this. It appears to be that something was missed. We didn't see any reference to this in the environmental impact reports and the reports, the project plans for the City View project. So I guess the general question is, was this something that was known? And if it was known, who was it, you know, who knew about it? And then in terms of the properties, the parcels themselves, it it looks to me that the city is using eminent domain to acquire the properties. And then the properties will be sold to a private developer. So I guess the general question is, is that property open to sale to the general public or just the particular particular developer in this project? And and I guess just the overriding concern is, is if it's being sold to the developer, is it just the underground element or is the above ground element owned by the private developer? And how that relates to, you know, the public right of way, I guess, at that point? I just note that when we reviewed this project originally, it didn't seem like this information was available. And it potentially could have changed some of our perspectives as to the questions we would have asked. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Lebrun.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know why I'm.
You may have another device on there in the house. Owen, we're not able to hear you right now if you're trying to speak. So Lebrun, raise your hand when when the device appears to be operable and then we'll come back to you. Thank you. Let's go back to the council. Councilmember Prowlus.
Yeah, thank you and thank you, Steph, for your work on this. I know it was time consuming to try and determine, especially as you're dating back as far back as we've had to go. And I will briefly mention in regards to, I know Paul Soto has has brought it up in different occasions, but certainly don't deny what he's saying and agree in fact that, you know, a lot of of the land acquisitions and property ownership that has come about over the centuries before us were not necessarily something that any of us would be proud of. But needless to say, we we now are living within a time where certainly we could recognize that. But it's not necessarily going to to change, for instance, a a property ownership transfer voter vote we may be taking like today. But I do agree with Mr. Soto that these are things that we should not necessarily gloss over and should be at least recognized in in more formal fashions. And I I hope that we will be able to do so as we move to expand the work and the efforts of our new Office of Race and Equity. But with that, I'll I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, motion second. And come back to Mr. Lebrun. So Lebrun.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that, much appreciated. So very briefly, I I don't have any problems with the resolution that's in front of you right now because I believe everybody has done due diligence. And here we are, this is what we have to do and of discussion. The one thing I I do want to bring to your attention, though, is that is the ultimate objective is to somehow straighten, you know, Park Avenue, make it less minoring and revert back to a square grid of buildings. I respectfully would like to put it to you that that would face some severe headwinds. And I would suggest that whoever is designing that particular area, start paying attention to the the, I guess, the downtown west design guidelines as to properly design the city in the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to council, any further comment? Let's vote on Councilmember Prowlus's motion.
Enes.
Yes.
Mayor. It's Nora. Yeah, I'm sorry. You you have to separately go through the Ford Need and Necessity Resolutions.
Okay.
And then you can take everything as a whole, but you need eight votes on each of those.
Okay. Perhaps then I'm pulling up the top of the memorandum.
Yes, I'm. I'm sorry, it's it's section B of the recommendation.
Okay. So can we take all the parcels together or do we have to take them separately?
Yeah, you you should do an individual vote because you're finding for the need and necessity to start the eminent domain proceedings on them. And then the rest of the recommendations you can take together. And then the rest of the recommendations you can take together. But for parcel A, which is subsection B of the recommendation.
Okay. So regarding to parcel A, is there a motion, councilmember Pralis?
Yeah, I could, uh, restate it so it, that it's a little more clear. So I'll move, uh, staff recommendation, uh, and that includes, I guess, just honest Nora, would I be including recommendation A or, or is, is, is that's included correct to public hearing?
Yes, the, the recommendations B, C, D, and E are for the need and necessity for the, for each of the four parcels and those have to be voted on, um, each one separately. And then section F is adopting a resolution with the remaining recommendations. And I think that covered your, um, motion, which, which would be section F of this. But sections, um, B, C, um, D and E have to be separate.
Okay. So I guess that's all I was trying to confirm is, is if we're going to do separate motions, should I be including, say for instance, A and then maybe F into each and every one of them, or is that a separate one as well?
A is the, um,
Is what we're doing.
Public, yeah, we've had that public hearing. So B is the, um, need and necessity.
So I'll, I'll move, uh, staff recommendation B first.
Second.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, B is as to parcel A. Correct?
Make it confusing, yes.
Yes, okay, sorry. But there was a second, councilmember Foley, so we'll vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Morales?
Hi.
Cohen?
Hi.
Roscoe? Davis?
Hi.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Licardo?
Hi.
Going back to Roscoe?
Hi.
Thank you. Unanimous.
All, all now mayor move, uh, uh, staff recommendation C, which is in regards to parcel B.
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Morales?
Hi.
Cohen?
Hi.
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Hi.
Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Licardo?
Hi.
Thank you. Also unanimous.
Thank you. I'll now move, uh, staff recommendation D, which is in regards to parcel C.
Second.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Morales?
Sorry, hi.
Hi.
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Licardo?
Hi.
Unanimous.
And lastly, I'll move, uh, staff recommendation, um, oh, now I've lost my E. Just parcel, parcel D.
Second.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Morales?
Hi.
Cohen?
Hi.
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Licardo?
Hi.
Also unanimous. Thank you.
And, and I think we still have remaining F, G, and H, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move to accept, uh, the rest of the staff memo.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Morales?
Hi.
Cohen?
Hi.
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, is it over yet?
Thank you.
Fabulous. Okay, we're done. Now, we're going to go back to the remaining two items on the agenda. I know it's just after four o'clock now, so we'll take these until dinner. And, uh, let's see how we're doing. We'll figure out what appropriate time is to break. Uh, item 6.1 is the Santa Clara Valley Water District efforts about purified water projects in Santa Clara County. I assume we should take these separately. Is that right, Dave?
Actually, I'll look to staff on that because I know there's no presentation of 4.1. So Carrie, did you want us taking 4.1 separately? Or are they together?
Thank you. Yes, only the purified water act item has, um, an action needed. The others are information from the Santa Clara, Santa Clara Valley Water District.
Okay, we can take them all together then. I'll also call 6.2, which is overview and water supply planning and water change, charge rates, setting processes. Okay. Dave, who would you like to hand this to? Carrie?
Actually, I think Valley Water has a presentation.
Great. So who'd like to speak for Valley Water? Kirsten?
Um, on the water rate, we only have a presentation on the water rates item 6.2.
Okay.
And I think our chair wanted to say a few words.
Okay, uh, are you, uh, you want?
Yes.
Welcome.
Come on. Good afternoon, mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing Valley Water to provide this presentation to you here today. I'd like to share a few thoughts on the, on the topic. I'd like to acknowledge the reality of our situation. We're facing serious drought conditions and we have no way of knowing how bad they might get or of course how long they might last. Yet, um, we all still need water and having safe, uh, clean water is crucial for our lives, for our economy and for our environment. Further complicating this is the fact that Anderson Dam is now empty. So, uh, so that we can work on rebuilding the dam. That will take about 10 years from start to finish. Meaning that we won't have our largest reservoir in operation for a better part of a decade. So that means that we will likely have to purchase additional water to keep our residents and businesses supplied. Now, of course, uh, you know that, uh, water isn't free. And if demand goes up and supply is down, that makes it even more expensive. All of the factors into our careful deliberations are water rates, uh, which is currently underway. As you may remember, the board chose not to increase water rates last year due to the impacts of COVID-19. However, circumstances have changed for fiscal year 22 due to the return of drought conditions. This is not something that we're taking lightly. However, and inaction, uh, now have potentially detrimental effects down the road. Especially if drought conditions worsen, it's imperative then that we act now. Thank you for your time, mayor and council members. We look forward to working with you and your staff on this important project. Kirsten?
Um, which one are we talking about right now? The 6.1 or 6.2?
Well, um, we're taking them together and, uh, I, Carrie, did, did you have a preference terms of how we proceed?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I think it would be helpful to hear the Valley Water, um, topics and then we can move on to, um, the city staff report.
Makes sense. Okay, Kirsten, welcome.
All right. Well, Chair Estorner, did you have some comments on the purified item as well or?
I do.
Okay.
Well, we're, I think we're taking the presentation first on water supply planning and water charge rates. Why don't we take that on first?
Okay, well, then that would be Aaron.
All right. Well, uh, yeah. Well, thank you, uh, honorable mayor, honorable council members. I'm Aaron Baker, Chief Operating Officer of the Water Utility for Valley Water. And, um, I'll have the first part of this presentation and then Darren Taylor, our CFO, will have the second part of this presentation. And if you'll allow me, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here real quick. And all right. Can we see it?
Yes, we can.
All right, perfect. Okay, so, uh, here we are, uh, an overview on some water supply planning and then Darren will have a, a talk a little bit more about, uh, the rate setting process. So, um, you know, Valley Water is the groundwater management agency for Santa Clara County. Uh, we're a special district, uh, formed, uh, back in 1929. Uh, since the early 1900s, Santa Clara County has used more water than naturally occurs. Uh, due to over pumping, land subsided, subsided over 13 feet in, in San Jose area between 1915 and 1970. Uh, Valley Waters, uh, water importation and groundwater management activities have since halted land subsidence or the sinking of the ground around 1970 and resulted in groundwater level recovery. These activities remain essential in preventing subsidence and ensuring sustainable groundwater supplies. Without Valley Waters' conjunctive management programs, including managed and in lieu recharge, groundwater levels will be considerably lower than they are today, reducing water supply reliability and increasing the risks of renewed land subsidence or even saltwater intrusion. Some of these activities include building and operating, building, operating and maintaining those local reservoirs. Uh, as you can see, as we're, as was done in the 30s and then later a little bit in the 60s. Uh, securing and, uh, delivering state water project water, uh, that with the first deliveries there in the 60s. Um, as you can see, that helped bring the, the water back up, uh, even with that increased growth. And then later securing additional importer water from the federal central valley project in the 80s. Today, our groundwater levels are sustainable due to the investments we made previously. Valley Water seeks to provide water supply of adequate quantity and quality to meet the desired quality of life in the community. Uh, to fulfill this mission, Valley Water imports water into the county, manages two groundwater sub-basins, owns and operates three water treatment plants, uh, partners with you on an advanced water purification center. We have a state of the art water quality laboratory, 10 reservoirs, three pumping stations, a hydroelectric plant and numerous recharge facilities in seven major recharge systems. And though we use that, read those recharge facilities to actually, you know, artificially recharge the groundwater, which is then pumped out by retailers such as yourself. Valley Water is authorized to import, store, treat and distribute water within its jurisdictional boundaries to provide water in sufficient quantity and quality for present and future beneficial use. We wholesale drinking water to water retailers such as yourself and protect and augment groundwater for the benefit of multiple water retailers, mutual water companies and thousands of private well owners that pump groundwater. Water retailers then deliver the water to the consumers in the county. We receive revenue from groundwater charges for water pumped from those areas. And we also, uh, revenue from the sale of treated water, non potable surface water and recycled water. This system is aging as you can, as some of our facilities works for first constructed in the early 30s. We have quite a bit of, of, of that, the system is aging and needs quite a bit of ongoing care. And in fact, the Anderson Dam retrofit project is the district's number one public safety project. Earlier this year in February, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission mandated that Valley Water bring it down to Deadpool, or bring it down to what we call Deadpool, which is about 3,000 acre feet of water in the essentially empty. Over half of the water used in the county comes from imported sources. This water travels hundreds of miles to make it to the county. And as I mentioned before, we have, we're, we're fortunate to have contracts with both the federal central valley project and the state water project. For San Jose Muni's Evergreen Water System, the clean, safe water we are supplying to you today was theoretically captured in Shasta Reservoir over 450 miles away, released to the Delta, pumped from the Delta to the Delta Mendota Canal, then pumped into the San Luis Reservoir and then pumped from the San Luis Reservoir, boosted at the Coyote Pumping Plant near Anderson Reservoir and then treated at our Santa Teresa Water Treatment Plant using robust and reliable technologies, including ozone, and then pipe to your service area turnouts. With climate change, the need to take care of the environment, the aging infrastructure, both local and imported water is becoming less plentiful and more expensive. A diversified, uh, portfolio for a reliable supply is key to this. Uh, you know, we understand that importer water, local surface water and groundwater and conservation and recycled water are all part of the future for Santa Clara County's sustainable water supply. And in fact, even in dry years like now, conservation or conservation as a way of life are some of the key things that we're looking at to maybe offset some of the growth that cities like yourself are projecting. Uh, in addition, we need additional water for the environment. Uh, as we've looked to see that some of these facilities that we've built, um, you know, a while ago or water that is pumped from the Delta, there are new regulations, there are new things that are out, new, new regulations and requirements that are out there that both hit both our local and importer water supplies that are projected to reduce the amount of water available for water supply, but will benefit the environment, uh, which is good. Where are we right now for this year? Uh, so the drought monitor shows Santa Clara County in a, in a moderate drought due to abnormally dry precipitation. As you can see right now, uh, to be, uh, you know, the, um, we have a water shortage contingency plan in our urban water management plan that guides us for declaring droughts with further restrictions. At this moment, we're not there yet, but we're monitoring the conditions and we're looking at calling on supplemental importer water as our chair mentioned earlier in this, in this presentation. Locally here in the county, rainfall in San Jose is below 50% of normal. Our reservoirs are at 30% of normal or basically they're, they're at 44% of the restricted capacity. But what we've did for that restricted capacity is we took Anderson out. So we're actually even lower than we were before. Importer water wise, the snowpack is, 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 you know, two thirds of normal. And here's the, the big kicker for us, as I talked about before, we rely on a, a, a bunch of importer water. Our state water project allocation is only 5% of the 100% that it could be. Our current central valley project allocation is 5% for ag and 55% for our M and I use. We currently have healthy groundwater levels, but our projections show that we will need supplemental importer water to maintain these healthy groundwater levels and prevent subsidence. In addition, as I mentioned, we lowered water levels in Anderson Reservoir as a part of an effort to strengthen the existing dams so we, so it could safely withstand a large earthquake. That project will keep the public safe and eventually allow Valley Water to store more water in Anderson. While this important work is done though, we'll have to rely more on importer water over the next 10 years while we are retrofitting that dam. Due to the shortage of local water and low importer water allocations, we're also calling on our banked water supplies. We have water, uh, in what we call the semi tropical groundwater bank, uh, that we're, that we're pulling back up. And we're also looking, as I mentioned before, to secure that supplemental importer water. The historic drought of 2012 to 2016 showed us that we must be prepared for climate change and more frequent and severe droughts. And immediate challenge is facing us today, and that's the widespread dry conditions we're seeing right now, coupled with our recent lowering of water levels in Anderson. Consequently, we're going to need to make sure to continue to provide the community with reliable, safe supply of water, purchase significant amounts of supplemental water to import into our county. So how does Valley Water understand, now that I talked to, kind of gave us a gloomy, gloom and doom of, of what, uh, what's going on this year? But how are we also looking and what does Valley Water invest into the future on? So we have a water supply master plan and this ensure sustainability strategy was actually adopted by the Valley Water Board in 2012. And it should be noted that this water supply master plan is complemented by several other plans that we have, such as an asset management plan, an infrastructure reliability plan, a one water plan. All these plans describe how we can ensure that our infrastructure is reliable and we'll be able to deliver water in the future. You know, we are definitely understanding what, what, uh, working and working with agencies such as your own to understand what growth is projected, what are the water needs for the county? How will we be looking in the future? And so we make sure that we have the water supply master plan to make the right investments, um, you know, to, to have a proper future. The first part of the strategy, of course, is securing the existing or baseline system. As I talked about, uh, before, our infrastructure is getting older. Uh, pipelines need to be replaced and these are very large pipelines, uh, uh, you know, 10 foot diameter pipelines that, uh, a long time ago I, I used to walk through or to do inspections on. So it's very large, expensive infrastructure that's in there. This includes securing our local water rights. Uh, as I mentioned before, we have, we're part of the Fisheries and Aquatic Habitat Collaborative Effort. And part of that effort will mean we'll be able to provide more water for the environment, which is great for the environment and great for, you know, our, um, uh, the sustainability of the, of, of the community. Uh, but it does have, does have less water for the water supply needs. We'll have pipeline maintenance, dam retrofits, treatment plan improvements and other projects to maintain our current system. Second part of our strategy is expand the use of drought resilient supply and conservation. These are generally local supplies, not hydrologically dependent and reliable during droughts. Um, you know, there, um, projects like portable reuse and other things, um, are, are some of the things that would fit into these, expand conservation and reuse, um, uh, type, type of efforts. Not only that, but we're also talking about in the conservation point of view would be green building codes or other things in that particular area. The third part of the strategy is optimize the system to increase flexibility. Uh, moving the water around to the proper areas, making sure that we're able to efficiently lose, loot, use every last drop. As we mentioned, 10 reservoirs, uh, over 400 acres of recharge ponds, um, three different water treatment plants. And so Valley Water spends a lot of time and, and has a lot of plans that make sure that we bring the water into the right places. We schedule it with the right importer water folks. We schedule it with the right importer water folks, we move it to the right areas. We partner with agencies such as yours and San Jose Water Company to understand exactly where they're pumping. And we make sure that we can, uh, understand and do the recharge where the pumping is. Do, you know, and understand if there's other types of things out there and build on partnerships to make sure that the system is operating efficiently. So that we can make sure that as the cost of water goes up, that we're efficiently loot, using every last drop. Alright, um, so then there's the other part was, I did talk about, so we have a water supply master plan, you know, it, uh, of initially approved in twenty ten, uh, and then, uh. Uh, um, the last one was in, in twenty twenty, we have an annual, uh, update of that. And that's, uh, what we call the monitoring assessment program. And what we do is we look at the water smime, water supply master plan and things change as we move along. Uh, one of the biggest things that we've noticed, which is actually, um, you know, is, is, is that the drought rebound or the rebound from the last drought. Wasn't as big as we initially projected. Uh, so we're, what we're doing is we're optimizing our investments to understand that. Um, the drought rebound and, uh, the way that, that the community and the great city of San Jose has made conservation a way of life. And so we're understanding where does that fit into certain things so that we can make sure that we have the right investments into the future. And that includes looking back and, uh, partnering closely to understand the usage demands. And then also the projected growth in, in various areas. Alright, um, and like, like I mentioned before, uh, we look at this annually, we're looking at it all the time, we have a unit. That, that's all they do is, you know, plan for water supply, plan for ensuring we have sustainability. And we believe it's solid, but we recognize that it is a long road to fully implement projects. As we start to talk about, uh, or as you, as you may have heard, there are many things that Valley Water is looking at in the future of water supplies. The Pacheco Reservoir, Los Vaqueros Expansion, uh, diversifying our groundwater banking program. But all of these things take time and all of these things, uh, um, you know, aren't a hundred percent insured or don't have a hundred percent, um, uh, assurance of success. So we make sure we understand that we're, uh, optimizing our investments to the right places that where we think we'll have the greatest success. But also understanding and being conservative because we really are talking about water. We want to make sure that, that water is life and definitely during a pandemic where you need to wash your hands or do all these other things, that we must have water. Therefore, we continue to identify, analyze and monitor projects, uh, constantly so that we can make sure that, um, that, that we're making the right investments. Alright, get to the last slide here and then I can give it over to Darren. So how can Valley Water and City Center as they work together to ensure, uh, ensure a clean, reliable water supply for the city? Um, we'd love to partner and encourage, uh, the use of our conservation programs. A drop save now is going to be, uh, and I, I'm going to have to knock on some wood here. Dryer times next year will be very difficult for us, so a drop save now is a drop we can carry over to next year. A drop save now is also a drop that we don't have to buy on the open market for importer water, uh, especially since Anderson is down. Um, not only that, but we'd like to partner with you, the city has projected some growth, uh, and increased water needs in certain areas. Um, you know, and we like to partner on, on, uh, green building codes and, and other things like that to make sure we understand. Where the water is needed and, and make sure that we can partner together to make sure the water is there to, to supply the growth that you, that the city believes is, is right for the city. Um, and not only that, but we also want to, uh, as our water supply gets a little bit clearer. And as we look a little bit closer, we'd be more than happy to keep you informed on what investments we're making and how we're ensuring. Uh, that we have a, a sustainable water supply. And of course, the, uh, annual water supply conditions outlook and the dra- a new draft monitoring and assessment plan is coming up. Uh, that we'll bring to our board in the future. And with that, I know I talked really quick, I threw a lot of items out. Um, I think we could do two options here, uh, uh, Mayor and Council, we could, uh, have some questions now. Or we could hand it over to Darren and talk to, and have him talk about the rate setting process and we could answer some questions together.
No, Aaron, I think first, thank you for the presentation, well done. Um, I think it might be good to get everything out on the table. At once, and then, uh, because I'm feeling a lot of questions are going to overlap. And by that, I mean not just supply and rate setting, but also all the question of this water purification project. I suspect there's going to be a lot of interconnection with all that. So maybe it'll enable us to take all the presentations at once, then we'll go to the public and then we'll have questions that from, from the council.
Great, Darren.
Absolutely, okay, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council, Darren Taylor, Chief Financial Officer. And, uh, I'm going to provide, uh, just a very brief presentation on the FY twenty-two water charge setting process. And I'll start by mentioning that staff prepares a, a report each year, it's an annual report. On the protection and augmentation of water supplies, this year we prepared our fiftieth annual report. Filed it with the Cook of the Board on February twenty-sixth. It's available on our website, it talks about all the activities undertaken by the water utility. To ensure reliable water supply and it includes the, uh, financial analysis of the water utility, which supports. The staff recommended charges for FY twenty-two. And, uh, this next slide shows the water usage trend, this is the, the Valley Water managed water use that, that translates to revenue for Valley Water, which. Which, uh, is important because in order to back into rates, you got to know what, what your water usage is that, that translates to revenue. And, uh, it's in a stack bar format with treated water, uh, at the bottom, then groundwater right on top of that. And we have a little bit of surface and recycled water at the very top. And, and the trend is interesting, you can see what happened during the historic drought. Uh, with that drop in water usage in FY fifteen and FY sixteen, that was a thirty percent drop relative to the usage that we saw in FY fourteen. And then we see water usage sort of rebounded in FY seventeen and FY eighteen. And then in FY nineteen, we had a very wet winter and a very wet spring that caused, uh, homeowners to, to delay. Uh, turning on their sprinklers and we saw water usage decline in, in FY nineteen. And then we saw it rebound again back in, in FY twenty. But, but the, the rebound, as, as Aaron mentioned, hasn't been up to the level that it was prior to the historic drought. We would kind of have a new normal here. And so we're, we're well on track to, to the water uses that you see there in FY twenty-one, about two hundred and thirty thousand acre feet. Our FY twenty-two projection is a little bit higher than that, we're, we're showing just very, very slight growth as we project into the future. Uh, and, and in general, that, that lower, uh, water usage translates to, to, to higher water rates in, in the near term. But of course, it's great from a water supply perspective and over the long term helps prevent, uh, unnecessary, uh, water supply investments. Um, and then one thing that I, I did want to mention and, and Aaron also talked about this is that. Given that Anderson Reservoir are the largest reservoir in the county is at Deadpool. And, and the drought appears to be here already, uh, that, that staff has included additional budget in, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, the proposed budget. For supplemental water purchases and, and water bank takes. Uh, to the tune of, of, of a, of an increase in our budget of twelve point four million dollars versus last year. And, and it's likely that we'll include even more, uh, as we're going to talk to our board in late April. Uh, about our third pass budget and it's likely that, that that increase in budget related to water supply. Supplemental water purchases could be in excess of twenty million dollars in order to, to address the drought that we appear to be in. And this next slide is, provides a little bit of background on, uh, the water charge zones, uh, across the county. Uh, we've got four zones, the, the, the largest zone is Zone W two in the green shaded area. Uh, that's the, covers most of the cities in, in the northern portion of the county, including the vast majority of the city of San Jose. And, uh, that's the, the zone that I will be focusing on throughout the rest of this presentation. And this next slide, uh, shows the key assumptions that are included in the, uh, water rate financial model. Uh, and, and the assumptions that are driving the, the staff recommended charges for FY twenty-two that are shown in our annual report. It's based on a discussion our board that we had in January. And I'll just kind of walk through the box there on the left-hand side, uh, starting with baseline projects, just. That, that includes, a, a good example of that is our, our Rinconada Water Treatment Plant. Uh, the, the upgrade of that project, of that plant would extend the, the, uh, that, the life. Of that plant for, for the next fifty years. Uh, it was built back in nineteen sixty-seven. Uh, the next line there is the Delta Conveyance Project, that's the governor's one tunnel project. Uh, that would help ensure the reliability of imported water supplies, they're so important to the county. The third line there is the Anderson Dam Seismic retrofit, the board's highest priority. To, uh, retrofit, uh, the Anderson Dam, as we know, it's at Deadpool right now. Uh, fixing that would address a, a public health and safety concern and relieve operational restrictions that are, that are currently, um. In place there. And then we've got the portable reuse phase one project to develop nine to twelve thousand acre feet of drought proof water supply by FY twenty-eight. Uh, and, and, and which has obviously been a, a subject of, of discussion between our two agencies. Uh, the next line there is Pacheco Reservoir Expansion Project, which would, uh, in- increase the storage capacity in the county to a hundred and forty thousand acre feet. Uh, cost would be offset by a proposition one grant totaling almost five hundred million dollars. Um, and then very down there at the bottom, a master plan pro- projects placeholder. That, that's for anticipated costs related to pipeline rehabilitations. Other water treatment plant upgrades, uh, in, in the next, uh, few years and, and our SCADA system, uh, upgrades as well. And on the right-hand side, staff has prepared an alternative, sort of, uh, rate projection, if you will, showing what the rates would look like. If the board did not proceed, moving forward with the Pacheco Reservoir Expansion Project, that project is expensive, so we want the board to clearly see. How that project impacts rates and so we prepared, uh, scenario, uh, to show that. And this next slide shows the, uh, uh, groundwater charge projection in terms of percentage increase, uh, each year. For that North County Zone W two that I mentioned, uh, and, and all the assumptions that, that are, uh, are baked in. As I just mentioned in the previous slide, uh, we, we strive to have a very, uh, stable and, and smooth rate projection with the same percentage increase each year. Uh, which is what our retailers prefer, uh, we're looking at nine point six percent, uh, for the next few years before it tapers down to eight point seven percent in, in FY thirty. And you can see right below that, the monthly impact to the average household, uh, based on that projection. And this is a kind of a closer look at FY twenty-two, uh, as, uh, you heard earlier, the, and as you know, water rates were held flat for FY twenty-one, the current year. And then for FY twenty-two, you see the second column over from the right, that's the maximum proposed, uh, increase for FY twenty-two. At fifteen hundred and six dollars per acre foot for groundwater, uh, for, uh, municipal and industrial uses. That's a nine point six percent increase. And then down below, you see the, uh, the, the staff recommendation for a, a small increase in the, in the treated water contract surcharge from one hundred dollars per acre foot. To a hundred and fifteen dollars per acre foot, so for an agency like the city that, that takes treated water, the increase there would be, uh, cumulatively, uh, ten percent. For, uh, for treated water. And at the bottom, you see the impact, uh, to the average household in terms of a monthly bill ranging from four dollars and fifty-five cents to five dollars and six cents. Um, and that does not include any increase that a retailer would layer on top of that. As I mentioned, the, the alternative, uh, showing what that would look like, the rate projection, um, annual increases will look like without the Pacheco Reservoir Expansion Project. Uh, we would be at eight and a half percent per year as opposed to nine point six percent. And, uh, the impact of the, uh, average household is, is shown there as well. And, uh, from a schedule perspective, there is lots of opportunity for, uh, members of the public. To work, uh, into the, this process and input to our board. Um, uh, we, we did open the public hearing earlier today. Uh, we've got outreach to, uh, board's advisory committees, including the Water Commission tomorrow and the Environmental Water Resources. Uh, Committee on, on the nineteenth, that's not shown on the schedule. Um, and on the, also tomorrow, the board will be talking about the Pacheco Reservoir, looking at the business case for that project. And, and diving into the, the details there, uh, we'll, we'll continue the public hearing, uh, on the fifteenth and on the twenty-seventh. And the board is scheduled to, uh, adopt the budget and water rates on May eleventh. And just from a summary perspective, the groundwater production charge is, is driven by drop preparation. Uh, water supply reliability investments and infrastructure repair and replacement with all the, the large infrastructure that we, uh, operate and maintain. The proposed maximum FY twenty-two charges translate to an increase of four dollars and fifty-five cents to five dollars and six cents per month. Depending on whether it's groundwater or treated water and, and I'll pause there.
Mayor Licardo, if I might suggest that we, um, that I change my mind and that we, uh, we separate the issues of water. And, and the purified water project is really about wastewater. And, um, as the wastewater, uh, treatment operator. We want to focus on that separately and not conflate the two issues. So if we could, um, sort of talk about water supply and water rates. And wrap that up and then move on to purified water, I think it'll be a little, uh, cleaner from a, a discussion standpoint.
Okay, why don't we go then to council questions and then we'll come back for discussion. On the project and then we'll hear from the public about all these items.
May it, to clarify, are we about to do six point one or six point two?
Well, we have just done six point two in terms of presentations. So we're going to take questions and comments on six point two. Council's exhausted themselves on that issue, those issues, then we'll come back to the purified water project and have a presentation discussion on that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Jones?
Uh, yes, Mayor, actually I had raised my hand, uh, hand for a six point one. But, uh, since we're going to ask questions on six point two, um. Obviously, um. We all realize that, uh, there's a lot of cost involved in delivering quality water. But we also know too, that this is a, a really challenging and difficult time to wait, raise water rates, particularly for. Our community has been, uh, severely impacted by COVID. And so my question to, um, Valley Water is, uh. Can you tell me what types of programs, uh, do you have currently or in development that's going to be able to address? Uh, our communities in need, our vulnerable communities that need subsidized or low-cost water and how that would work?
I, I, I'll take a stab at that and then I'll let maybe Darren take a look at it. So, um, Valley Water is the, the wholesaler, um, and I think that, um, you know, and with the San Jose Muni being the actual retailer. Uh, so I, I believe that, uh, programs for, um, uh, or subsidizing or understanding what your customers' needs are. Or how you would use other funds from other areas or stimulus funding to help, uh, provide for water in various areas. Um, I think that would be more of a, a retailer type, um, uh, a nexus to that, to that particular program there. Um, that being said, you know, Valley Water definitely, you know, wants to work on, on equal access to water and understanding where those are. But, uh, being a wholesaler that, um, that just provides water from a turnout, uh, that, then you, uh, figure out which customers that water goes to. Uh, it's a little bit different in, in that particular program or in, in that particular area. Um, uh, for, uh, as opposed to being a wholesaler or the retailer who actually distributes the water to the actual customers.
No, I, I definitely understand and, and, um, you know, I'm, being a wholesale sailor, I understand that. You know, you just sell the water to the retailers and it's up to the retailers to create those programs. But those retailers pass those costs directly, uh, to, to the customers. And even though they have direct programs, um, it still, uh, creates an additional burden for those, um, vulnerable communities that I just described. Uh, so, so my request to Valley Water is to, to see if you can come up with some, uh, strategies or programs to how to, um. Integrate that cost, that lower cost in, in, in the wholesale portion of the water distribution. So that, that, that lower cost can be, uh, again, uh, passed on to the retailer who can also adjust their costs accordingly. And that's a, that's it for, for me here.
If, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just quickly, uh, a quick response, uh, the board has asked, uh, staff to review. Uh, exactly what you're talking about, Vice Mayor, how, uh, we can work on that. Because, um, it's true that we, you know, as a wholesaler, we don't have the di- a direct line to, uh, the end user, to our community folks. However, you're right, there may be a way that we can partner with our retailers or, you know, both municipal and private. Uh, where we can have a credit to them to make up for that kind of a program. So you're right for us, we're looking at, um, you know, what other ways that we can help. Because this is an issue that has, uh, really bothered us a lot. As you know, our special measures include exemptions for elderly seat for seniors, uh, low-income seniors. And so we, we're very concerned about that and we're looking at it.
Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
Alright, thanks, Tony. Uh, Councilman Coon?
Yeah, I, I might, like before, my, like, Chappie, uh, Vice Mayor Jones said, my hand is up for the other, I know. I do have a question, actually.
Yeah.
And, um, I'm going to ask Darren, can you put the presentation back up so I can see the slide on the, the. Increases in cost over the, each year? I think it was, I don't know, slide, I forget, my slide number, you don't have numbers on there. My slide number, you don't have numbers on there. Now, go forward to the table that showed the monthly year that, no. Okay, I guess it was that that first one there, yeah. So that's with Pacheco. You're saying you're you're giving about nine percent increase per year in charges, right? So every year, it's another nine percent increase?
That's correct.
So the total, my my calculation is about that over ten years. I guess you have here what, yeah, ten years, that's about a hundred, ten, hundred fifteen dollars per month higher water bill for for customers. So we're talking about a thousand dollars a year increase over ten years for this scenario. Just want to make sure that that's verified. Is that right?
Yes.
I I just, okay. So so the total increase over ten years is the sum of these numbers. I just want to make sure make sure that's clear. And then I guess you went pretty fast. Where was the numbers without the Pacheco? I didn't see that table.
Eight point five. One one percent lower.
One percent low. Well, at the end, so it's about one percent lower. So it's still a significant increase, but but about about one percent per year lower, which I guess adds up over compounded over ten years. Okay, just wanted to clarify those numbers because that's a significant, I mean, it's hard to even fathom that kind of ten percent per year increase projected out over ten years and the impact on our residents in our city. So it's kind of important. And I think, you know, Vice Mayor Jones asked the right question. You know, how do we how do we mitigate this on the effect of this on our residents? Because this this, you know, this can really be a problem for people and water is a necessity, right? This isn't something people are choosing or not choosing. So I know it's kind of scary scenario to me, but I wanted to make sure I understood. But thank you for the clarification.
I I should quickly respond, Councilman. Tomorrow, we have that session on Pacheco. And it's exactly why we want to look at it and see if we want to pursue it. If we want to look at different numbers or if we we want to talk about the exact issues that you raised.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you. And I'm just going to inform our Valley Water trustees and and staff that I'm not putting my video on because I've had some technical issues. And I don't want to get kicked off, so I apologize about that. What one of the areas that I've persistently talked about is is the rate increases to our ratepayers. And so I appreciate the questions before me. And and since we are that retailer, what I wanted to to delve into, I think, Dave, Councilmember Cohen did this fairly well in terms of what that impact of that ten average of ten percent rate increase over the the ten-year span. And it and the the number is more realistic that way. I think the graph is is a bit misleading this way. And I can't remember what that slide number is. And so I guess I'd I'd want to ask us as a Muni water retailer, what would that what would that impact look like on us? What would that impact look like in terms of the rate increases?
Carrier Jeff, if you want to.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Jeff Provenzano, Deputy Director for Municipal Water System. The cost of wholesale water is approximately seventy percent of our operating budget. And so that, I believe, the number there, the impact is not the groundwater for District Eight, it's the treated water. And I believe if on Darren's table, there is somewhere around five dollars and ten cents a month. And so of the total rate impact we're looking at next year, that would be about sixty percent of it. If that makes sense. So the total dollar amount then based on that number would be approximately nine dollars a month increase of which about five dollars and ten cents would be wholesale water.
Jeff, if you could talk a little bit about our restrictions around low-income programs and then what percent of our city does our own municipal water system serve?
Yeah, so municipal water service system serves about twelve percent of San Jose, mostly in District Eight and a portion in District Four North San Jose. We have a little bit in Edenvale and Coyote Valley. The low-income program that we are speaking about earlier, perhaps a lower wholesale rate to establish a program, we are we are bound by Prop two eighteen. It's been a while, Council, since we've talked about that. So we're restricted in our use in how we can pass costs on to customers. And so there is maybe a benefit there. If Valley Water could establish a type of program where there's a cheaper type of water supply, we would buy that cheaper water supply and then be able to pass it on at a little bit of cheaper rate to qualified participants that we would set up that program, determine who could apply for it and what standards and then monitor that program.
But Jeff, so to summarize, unfortunately, right now, even though we are a retailer, as the Valley Water staff articulated, we're not legally able to offer low-income support.
That's correct.
And and for me particularly in in District Eight, this impacts the area of my district that is of lower income. Regardless of of that, I mean, I would, I'm interested in in always protecting our ratepayers regardless of how much they earn. And and I think as I went through some of the numbers, I know that the 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 graph is it doesn't show the cumulative increase, but I think at some point it almost doubles. And and that would be my concern in future years. I think it's I think it's in year seven approximately is where it doubles. And and we may be okay for the first, I don't know, three years, maybe. I will say maybe the average household, but those who are really just devastated because of COVID economically, this might be a huge, huge impact. And because we can't do anything for those ratepayers, this really concerns me. And so, you know, I'm not going to beat the dead horse here. I I'm I'm concerned about this ten percent over the ten-year span. And 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 especially because I heard, I I forget who the speaker was, but I wrote down that what they were, and I know this is not with six point one, but, you know, that they that there's a couple of different strategies that they're using. And one of them was to secure existing supplies and infrastructure. And I don't necessarily see that, but you know, we'll we'll talk about that in six point two. Anyways, th- those are my comments. I'm I'm I continue to be concerned. I want us to to make sure that that our 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 rates reflect what is what is happening to our residents. And I I really appreciate Valley Water being able to hold off on their rate increases last year. I'm sure that there's a lot of families who who would thank you if they knew it was you. So I will thank you on behalf of my my district residents. Absolutely appreciative of that. I think we need to continue to be cognizant of that a lot of families will take a long time to recover economically. I mean, I think we we've seen from our recession, even, you know, it was six years later and people still weren't back in a home. And and, you know, research has showed that most people who lost their home because of the recession just weren't able to get back into one. And so I don't expect that this type of economic impact is going to be any different. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Sparza?
Thank you. And, you know, thank you for the presentation. It is enlightening. I'm going to add my voice to the concerns about how the rate increase will affect our residents, particularly the city's residents who have been struggling due to the impacts of COVID. And 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 the money is a lot. We have twenty-two thousand extreme extremely low income and low-income households in our county who owe eighty-four million dollars. I have four food distribution sites in District Seven. Just four of them have fed over seventeen thousand households during the month of March. And so that's that's the context under which for a few dollars a month can really make a difference. There are still huge lines in District Seven anyway of folks who are waiting for food. And and I would also really like to thank Valley Water, who chose to forego rate increases last year to do due to the pandemic. But for so many people in the city and in the county, the crisis is still there. We're still in in the middle of it. And so I I maybe I missed the part about Prop two eighteen, so forgive me if I'm repetitive. But I know that retailers, including our own city's program, are unable to alter the rates based on a ratepayer's income under Prop two eighteen. But I understand that Valley Water has maintained that Prop two eighteen does not apply to groundwater charge rates. So would that allow Valley Water to develop an equity program that could target low-income ratepayers? Is that is that is that the type of credit that Valley Water is exploring?
Well, maybe I'll take a shot at answering that. I mean, while Prop two eighteen doesn't apply to groundwater charges, we are operating under the assumption that it does apply to our surface water charges. Also, we're under Proposition twenty-six and 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 basically the that we need, is that one customer class cannot pay for another customer class. And and that's the issue with with Proposition two eighteen with Proposition twenty-six. And and so again, as as the wholesale provider, I mean, I I I think Director Astramira was made the point that, you know, the the I think the best we can do is is try to partner with with the city and and try to provide benefit that way as opposed to, you know, some sort of low income, which which we just can't do. Our district act says that we have to have a groundwater charge for non-ag and and a groundwater charge for ag. And and so as the wholesale provider, we did, we just can't do a low-income program as as you might be thinking about.
Okay, so I had a question for one of my colleagues, because we have a representative to the Water Commission.
Yes.
And I I wanted to ask Councilmember Foley, would you feel comfortable sharing all of these points at tomorrow's commission meeting as well? For those that aren't able
Yes, she already has.
Oh, she already has. Yeah, I know. She's on it. Councilfully, a Councilmember fully definitely understands. So I so I would like to make a motion to accept the report from Valley Water. However, I'd also like to direct staff to return to council with a letter to submit expressing our concerns around the impacts of these increases, particularly on the hardest-hit households and families. And that we request that Valley Water investigate and explore ideas to reduce or eliminate the increase for this year and evaluate which projects may be able to be moved to the property tax role and evaluate other potential cost savings measur- measures, including those that could create a low-income tier to allow Valley Water to charge lower rates. I know I know that you just said that, but I'd I'd be interested in seeing what Valley Water could discover in doing a little bit more work around this. That's the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Councilwoman Sparza, could I ask if we we could table the motion? We'll certainly vote on it, but table it until the end of the discussion. So we can take public comment and everything together.
Okay, table it until with
Yeah.
six point one. So I thought we were going to take them separately.
Yeah, we 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 want to take all the presentations together, then we'll we'll go to public comment and take the motions. So so happy to, the motion's on the floor now. It's fine. We'll come back to vote on it toward the end here.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Vice Mayor Jones, is your hand up for the other item?
Yes, for the other item.
Come back to you then. Councilmember Foley?
I just wanted to thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Asparza and definitely I will bring it up tomorrow. I happen to be chairing that group now, if you can imagine that. So I've already brought up concerns about raising rates of the last commission meeting we had, and I will continue to bring up those concerns, but I just wanted to follow up on your comments and say it's it's in my notes and I will.
Leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I I just had a kind of a quick follow-up question, just as we're, you know, talking about looking at at various things here and especially for this type of thing. It's my understanding that there could be stimulus funding or other things out there. First off, there's two things I want to say. One is Anderson is drained. Anderson will be out for ten years. And I hope that there is, we need to be making significant investments. I just heard, I think, last time that you have over a billion-dollar CIP program in your wastewater system. I hope that that we have a very large, robust CIP program for the treated water system also. Understanding that with Anderson out, that we may not be able to make deliveries or do certain things at certain times would mean that we would need to have, you know, your system have its access to wells and other things that we can, we can make that thing work. So, you know, making sure that there is water available for those types of things. And the the second question about, you know, I know that we're working hard. A lot of the times, we're talking about trying to find other funding sources. For us, it's really, you know, trying to find grants or other things in that particular program. And we do know that there are other there are things available to the city or other places that aren't available to special districts to 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 fund certain programs. So, you know, as if along with that letter or with some of those other things, if we're trying to leave no stone unturned, maybe those are other things that that the city could explore.
Okay. Thank you, Speaker. The questions, I had a few, but I just want to make sure my colleagues had a chance to probe fully on this. Okay. I just had a few questions about that chart about the increases. Could could you Speaker or somebody else in the district help me out? The increases prior to the time that we see, I think it's twenty twenty-two is the first year we see. If we could go back to that slide, could could you give me a sense of what the rate increases look like or past years, like say the last half decade? I think it was with the Pacheco scenario. So if you go back to the ten, the nine point five. That's it. Thank you, nine point six. So what did it look like before fiscal year twenty-two, if you could just remind us?
Yeah, we we've been kind of ranging in the in the neighborhood of of six to eight percent, maybe nine percent. We did have a couple of large increases during the historic drought where the increases were in the neighborhood of of nineteen percent because of the historic drought, because of that such a a large drop in in water usage, obviously with the with the pressure there and with all of the conservation investments and and waters water purchases, investments that we had to make. So, you know, that's that's what I would say is somewhere between six and eight percent exclusive of those of those two years with with the historic drought.
Thank you, Darren. And the the assumption here with Pacheco being in the baseline, is that at a two-point-five-billion-dollar cost?
Correct.
In my understanding is, in the last few months with the additional geologic work that's been done, that the cost of that has has doubled. And I I think, you know, we know what happens with big projects, that prices do go up. At what point did Pacheco stop looking financially feasible? For now, at the two-and-a-half-billion-dollar mark?
Yeah, that's that's a great question. I mean, and I and I think what going with this kind of gets to what the board is is going to do tomorrow, where they're going to be looking at at the business case for for the project and 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 kind of probing that exact question.
Okay, so the board's wrestling with that question. Does the staff have an opinion about sort of what's the threshold which you cross and when you say, you know, we're not sure this is such a great investment as opposed to investing in other things?
It's a tough question. Aaron, you want to take a shot at that?
Yeah, no, Ed, and we are. We're looking at them. Yeah, no, Ed, and we are. We're looking at them all the time. And, and I think that, you know, if we had Pacheco this year, we wouldn't be buying the the massive amounts of supplemental importer water that we were talking about here, right? And so uh, finding a, a project, we do, we are, we do understand the increased costs and we do understand the impact it has on rates. We also understand that our existing waters, our water supply, there is no, there's only a limited amount of water on the earth, right? Uh, and right now, uh, our projections are showing that we, we will need additional water. Uh, you know, the, basically, it's that kind of interesting. We're a wholesaler, right? But realistically, we're just either buying waters from the Fed or the state, uh, or building so, uh, some reservoirs and that particular thing and passing those costs down, down the line. So um, we definitely will understand where that is if there is uh, less growth or if there is a level of service need that we can uh, work with the retailers on, um, you know, that, that, uh, that we don't mind as much conservation in drier times. And those are the types of things that we want to, you know, that the board will, will weigh and understand, you know, i- if, if there isn't emergency water available in Pacheco, where else would we give it? Get it? And the other part that we're, the, the other part that's very difficult to kind of understand is locally, right? I mean, the difference we talked about here is that, you know, you hear about Oroville, you know, Shasta's gonna be doing these types of things. We understand that there's, you know, there's projects that'll, that are gonna have impacts with the delta. Having a local reservoir, you know, and understanding reliability of only having to travel through uh, what's that, seventy-five miles worth of pipe instead of four-hundred-and-fifty miles worth of canals is, is a different, is a different type of thing. One that doesn't rely on delta levees. So there is a, there's a myriad of things that we look at. Is it new water supply? Is it reliability? Is it those types of things? And, and yes, Mayor, we do understand the increased costs and I think we're, we're, you know, uh, again, tomorrow we'll talk a little bit more and get the board's opinion on, um, is this something that, that, uh, you know, that, that, uh, that still makes a business case uh, for us to be looking, to, to be moving on?
Maybe just make a suggestion, just for, for transparency and communicating with the public. It may be helpful. You know, you're, you're looking across a range of investments. There's opportunity costs and whatever investment you make. Um, and you know, you, you might be looking at Los, the Carros and expansion there. You might be looking at um, uh, expanding advanced water purification. At, at the extreme level, you might be looking at D-SAL. Uh, you're, you're importing water. These are all investment decisions you're making. I think it would be helpful for us in terms of not having the experience and knowledge that you have to be able to understand the relative cost of those various investments so that we can understand and put in context what a capital investment like this really means. You know, obviously it would have to be um, yeah, taken time, present value and, and, uh, you know, I recognize this are annualized costs. It takes some work to get to those numbers where they're apples to apples, but it, I would just offer that as a suggestion as you're, as you're talking about these rates. It would help the public and certainly folks like us who are less sophisticated, really understand what the trade-offs are.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I intervene, please? Richard Santos. Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you. We are pursuing that.
I have a limited amount of time, though, so if you could.
I'm trying to answer your question, sir.
Question, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, it's a good suggestion, and we're pursuing that with an audit of the Pacheco to make sure that all the dollars and cents that have been added to it, that we can all fully understand it and see where we, we can cut costs. Let's go back also, in reduction of costs for water, we have twenty-two rebate programs. We do other things to reduce the cost to residential and consumers. So I mean, Ms. Foley tomorrow can ask our staff to make that presentation about those rebates that do have an effect on cost. We're with you in every way we can to try to reduce costs to the residential people during this very challenging times. So we're very considerate of what's going on. I get the same bills and I still got a shower with the five-gallon bucket in. So we're doing the best we can.
And lastly, and lastly, Mayor, I think you're right about being able to share more information. We're more than happy to share those numbers with you. Maybe we need another one or two, you know, during the year, uh, one or two sessions with you, and we're happy to share all that with you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, if we could go to the next slide where it's without Pacheco and we look at sort of the baseline cost, if we took the large Pacheco project out, which I know is not currently the, uh, not currently the direction. And, and it, it seems that there are really substantial increases, um, that are already baked in presumably because of large capital projects. And I'm wondering why isn't the capital cost that we see sort of underlying these large increases? Why isn't that already baked in or absorbed by the parcel tax measures that voters approve, that were, that are being imposed on voters today and, on parcel owners from the year two thousand or measure B in twenty-twelve or the measure that just passed last year in twenty-twenty? We, we know, you know, those are measures that, that can be uh, some extent moderated to reduce the impact on, for example, as was mentioned before, long-term seniors. And I'm just wondering why large capital projects aren't baked into those measures and instead are being now imposed additionally on rates?
Darren, you wanna, I, I would, I could start, i- i- historically, those measures are, are, and the, the amount of money available in those measures is uh, and maybe Darren will give you the right number, but it's ninety-five percent for flood risk reduction and flood protection, uh, and environmental stewardship. Um, very, very, very limited amounts of property tax or uh, measure S. It, it, there is some conservation, but it's very, it's mostly to make sure that we have a, uh, if the district has multiple missions, uh, you know, uh, environmental enhancement, water supply and, and flood risk production. Um, you know, those measures are typically, a, a lot of that work is, is done there. Darren, please, you probably have the, the better uh, analysis on that.
What you said is absolutely true. I'll just add two things to that. One is that the, the special parcel tax measure that was approved in November does include about sixty million dollars or ten percent of, of the cost for, for Anderson Dam. We'll pay for about ten percent of that. Forward, we are looking at uh, trying to get some legislative changes to our district act that would allow us to do a, a general obligation bond. And, and that may open up some opportunity for, for that exact uh, type of thing in the future for us.
I'm sorry.
Those suggestions.
Tony, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm actually just about out of time. Uh, we have, we have a ten-minute restriction, so I just wanted to ask my last question if I could. Just wrote briefly and happy to hear your comment, uh, uh, after I just get this last question out. Could, could, could you just tell us what kinds of cost reductions or efficiencies that the agency is taking upon itself, given these very large, very substantial increases on rates? Uh, we're looking now at rate increases are just projected to double in seven years, which means by twenty-twenty-eight, they've already increased enormously. So how is the agency tightening the belt in its own operations? Can you help us understand that?
Uh, I'll take a first stab at it, Darren.
Good.
Thank you. Um, so I, I think the first part is, is that, you know, for operationally, especially this year and the previous years, we've been holding things relatively flat. Uh, the money that you see here is, is Anderson, i- and, and a good portion of it, a little bit of Rinconada. It's basically the capital program is driving these, these larger increases. The other thing is this costs are all going up and, and, and our infrastructure is, is there, but as far as are we adding, you know, I think we, in this particular budget, we've, we've got, uh, um, we've got very few increased heads. We've got very few other things, but I, I do, I, I think that the other part would also understand is that our costs are also going up. The cost for this water from the Central Valley Project, the cost of this water from the State Water Project, the cost of, of operating a dam is, is noth- nothing like it was before. Not only that, but our, we're in the Fisheries and Aquatic Habitat Collaborative Effort. More and more water is being uh, produced for the environment, which is great. Uh, it also means that we're required to operate, uh, and those, these creeks and other things more, more, with more people. We have stricter requirements on those things as we move forward. Not only that, but with drought and climate change, the water quality is getting worse. We're using more chemicals, energy is more expensive, and uh, all of those things are there. Uh, as far as people or trying to, you know, are, are we ballooning up? No. Well, a- at least not in the, on the water utility side, let's say there. Uh, we, we are, we're operating as efficiently as we can. Um, and not only that, but we're trying to keep these things squared away. And like I said before, there's a finite amount of water. And there are many other agencies that would love to have the water allocations or the importer water that we're going after. And we must aggressively protect that, including all the things that we need to do in Sacramento, all the things that we need to do in in Los Banos, all the things that we do in Los Angeles. And all of these things, all of that water, all these people, we're all fighting for the same water, the farmers, Southern California and everywhere else are all fighting for that water. And so for us to, the cost of this water just unfortunately is going up uh, as we're reliant on this importer water, the retrofits for our dams, as soon as we finish Anderson Reservoir, uh, we have to retrofit Calero Reservoir, which is the other terminal reservoir that we've got. Um, and then not only that, but we've got Almedin and the others as we kind of move down the line. Uvis and Yagas, we're doing, um, or Uvis and Chesbrough, we're doing a, uh, you know, studies on them right now. We can see that those types of things are going on in the future. Not only that, we have programs to, uh, unfortunately, the capital program. Upgrade our SCADA environment, upgrade our treatment plants to make sure that we meet the, the, the regulations. And then the distribution system. We have unfortunately some, one of our, the Almond Valley Pipeline is made of pre-stressed concrete cylinder pipe. We have a sensor on that. That uh, seven-foot diameter pipe is actually deteriorating in the ground as we speak. And it's the only supply that we have. If that goes out, then we're, you know, we, we, we'd be very difficult to keep the Santa Teresa Water Treatment Plant with water, which would keep the Evergreen area with water. So, uh, anyway, we are, belt tightening is definitely something that's going on. And in fact, the other part would be is that, you know, I hate to say it, but the the money that we're spending for the expedited purified water project or those types of things is directly cutting out of the, what I have for operations. So um, you know, I, I, I mean, the, the, the additional money that we're paying to do those certain things is actually coming down off, off of that line there. So Darren, save me if, is there anything else I'm missing? I, I might be a little too passionate about this.
I would just say that, but the key thing is controlling headcount. We didn't add any staff last year. Uh, on the Warty-Tulus side, we're just looking at maybe free staff on the, to help us deliver capital projects, but that's really where the control effort is, controlling it.
Okay, thanks, Darren. Thanks, Aaron. And Tony, you're
I just wanted to show you, Mayor, that uh, some of your ideas that you just expressed with respect to bonding and measures. We have a, we have a subcommittee that's been looking at that specifically on a policy basis to look at, you know, other ways of, uh, of expenditures, including like you mentioned, uh, you know, both measures and special measures and also, um, uh, you know, what, whatever else is possible for us um, besides grants and so on.
Thank you.
But bonding and, you know, uh, whatever we can find.
Thank you.
We're on that.
All right. Appreciate all the answers. I know these are complex questions or complex issues. Um, I, I know that we wanted to go next, I think, carry to the advanced water purification project. Is that right?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, Jeff has a, a brief presentation covering the, the staff memo and then um, we're looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Carrie, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, yeah, just very brief. Um, there's been a lot of discussion on this topic uh, in March. And actually, uh, there's been a lot of discussion between uh, Valley Water and staff going back several years on it and, uh, and then looking at what we could say here in, uh, in under five minutes that might provide some context to council. Um, it, uh, it really, there is a, a, uh, without bounds, uh, there's a, an unlimited amount of information that we could provide. Uh, literally, we could drive from here to Las Vegas and talk the whole time on this topic. Um, so in the next five minutes, uh, I want to try and take a different approach. I want to talk about, um, a little bit about a, a dynamic that's occurred um, uh, between uh, Valley Water and, and City as, as organizations. Uh, kind of maybe help explain to council where we've been in discussions over the past few years and kind of what is influencing our discussions as we kind of move forward, um, with the recommendation. Um, and, uh, and we maybe can have a discussion on that. Um, I, I would like to start too, that we have a, a broad history of working with Valley Water on a wide range of topics and agreements. Um, this one in particular is a little bit different than I think than we normally have engaged with them. Um, and I'll begin, uh, and hopefully I can communicate this clearly, uh, this dynamic and, uh, and we'll see how I do. As, uh, council and mayor, I'm sorry, most of you know or have had experience working with the regional wastewater facility. And so I'm gonna do a little bit of background and, uh, for those that may not have that, that knowledge. Um, we, uh, as City of San Jose are co-owners with the City of Santa Clara of the Regional Wastewater Facility, a joint power authority. And one of our responsibilities as both owner and administrator, it's actually a three-part responsibility. And it's to collect wastewater, treat it, and get it safely into the environment. And going along with that, that three-part responsibility, um, it's not just plain responsibility, it's legal responsibility. There's a social responsibility and there's an environmental responsibility that's tied to it. Now, Valley Water, um, is very interested in, in their purified water project, and it's a great project, and we've been very uh, supportive of the concept of that project, uh, since the initial beginning of it, when they started to look at it over maybe six years ago. The way that it's a little bit different now, the way it's kind of ended up is the preferred approach that Valley Water would like to do uh, is to uh, integrate a new purified water facility in with our existing operations. And what I mean by that is, is if we're running, uh, the wastewater treatment plant, and there's three parts. Again, there's uh, collection, treatment, and the environment that we're looking at. And it runs twenty-four-seven hours, twenty-four-seven. Um, it never stops. We never go on vacation. We can never shut it down. It's constantly running, and that's our responsibility on the wastewater side. Uh, both now and with a lot of unknowns that are coming our way. And uh, COVID kind of got in the way, I think, of some of the discussions, the council and information on the wastewater side. But changing regulations, changing impacts on the environment, climate change, sea level rise, um, changing um, changing uh, wastewater, this would be sewer water quality, which can impact us all the way through. So on the wastewater side, there's a lot of unknowns and uncertainties that we are responsible for on collecting, treating, and getting it safely into that environment. With Valley Water's project to come in, what they would like to do is to really fully integrate in with what we're doing right now. And that's created a, uh, actually, let me add there too. In all the projects we just heard Valley Water talk about, and in everything that they do, I think it's one of our expectations, um, for all of us that Valley Water is trying to reduce costs, reduce risks, uh, reduce uncertainties. And that is an expectation, I think, right, we have for them on everything. The interesting dynamic now with purified water is to do this project and integrate with us. They are achieving what I think, or trying to achieve, what we would expect of them would be to minimize uncertainty and minimize financial risk. Unfortunately, how that kind of works out is that is transferred over to us to do and to manage, in addition to our ongoing responsibilities. And so I'll pause there, because if I have explained that well, that is where we have been the last couple of years. And it influences all the discussion items, um, that we have going forward. Um, from time to time, uh, you may hear, uh, discussions on source of water. Um, this would be how Valley Water gets the water from us. It's there. Uh, it can be used. But how it can be brought in and not impact our existing operations, um, our existing responsibility on collecting, treating, and getting it safely into the environment is that level of discussion on each of the items that we have been focusing on and will continue to focus on going forward. Um, and there's other ones too. I listed several categories in that supplemental memo um, such as uh, source control, that'd be the quality of the water coming in and how that's gonna change over time. Uh, reverse osmosis concentrate, we talked about that one last time, um, about how that can impact the environment, especially over time. Um, and uh, again, I started this conversation really in, in, in Valley Water is very interested in integrating. Uh, they, they set up the purified water project as a preferred model uh, to integrate in with, with us. And that has been what's leading us into the broader discussion of responsibility, uh, control, um, risk, uh, who's gonna bear the risk, cost of risk going into the future. And unfortunately, that is what has slowed down a lot of the discussions over the years. Um, and hopefully, uh, with the recommendation, we can pick that back up and go a little bit faster. But that's, in general, that is where we are as two agencies, trying to do the jobs that we're responsible for and, and, uh, live together.
And Jeff, thank you. If I, if I could just, um, summarize that one point, that we're all trying to keep costs down. But we want to make sure that keeping the, uh, drinking water side costs down doesn't result in the city having to increase wastewater costs. So, so we're trying not to, um, not to sort of lessen one side to burden the other because the pool of customers in wastewater is smaller than the pool of customers on the drinking water side. And so we just want to ensure we're not disproportionately impacting one, uh, one set of customers. But as Jeff said, most importantly, money is important, but most importantly, we want to protect the environment. And we want to make sure that, that we're confident that we can continue to do that. We do view that as our highest priority. And with that, Jeff, we're available for questions?
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks. Great. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Carrie. Okay. Let's, uh, go to council questions now. Vice Mayor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and thank you, uh, Jeff and Carrie for that, that presentation. I think everybody, if they didn't know before, has a clear understanding of how complex this, this whole situation is. It was over a year ago that, uh, Valley Water actually approached me and, uh, we had a, a discussion in terms of, um, how we can move this, uh, project forward. And I agreed to, to carry the water for, for this project and, and move it forward. Uh, once we got into it, obviously we realized how complex it was. Our initial focus was actually to get an agreement that was exactly the same as Palo Alto and Mountain View. And that seemed to be pretty straightforward, but as Jeff walked you through some of the history, there's a lot more involved and there's a lot more that Valley Water wanted to get out of the, um, the agreement. And it just created additional layers of complexity and then we got hit with COVID. And, um, so we had to regroup. And so what we did is we put together a, uh, memo. That what we're trying to do is provide a framework on how we can make this work and create a, a win-win for everyone. The old adage is that there's a three sides to every story, your side, my side and the truth. I know that, uh, Valley Water, uh, is especially expressed in, in the letter from Tony, that they liked my original memo, which actually didn't include a additional step of having a facilitator or mediator. This was actually came out, that suggestion actually came out of our joint, uh, joint meeting that we had. And if you look at the complexity, if you look at how complicated this whole process is, is, it became very evident that we needed someone who was a subject matter expert that could listen to all sides, make an evaluation and then present that to the board of, of Valley Water as well as the, the city council. So that's why we made that additional adjustment and step and included that into the framework. I did, uh, read, uh, Councilmember Cohen's memo and I'm receptive to your changes. But I want to have a, a, a clear understanding of, um, particularly how you define, um, make significant progress. So, um, Councilmember Cohen, can you, uh, enlighten us in terms of what you're thinking on, on significant progress?
Told me you'd be asking me easy questions.
So I told you I was going to give you.
I do, I do appreciate your, um, your, you know, joking, using water analogies. I feel like I'm neck deep this week and we're all in the swamp. But anyway, um, yeah, it's a tough one. I thought about that yesterday as we were putting this together. Like, how do we define what significant progress is? Who will make that determination as to whether we've reached a sticky point or we've made that progress? So, you know, it's not clear to me exactly what that is. I'm, I'm, you know, the purpose of my, the purpose of my memo is to try to keep some, keep us moving along a timeline that will help us get to a finishing line. This is one of those cases where it, it, it's almost like we might know it when we see it, but I can't define it ahead of time what significant progress is. Um, and I, I'm certainly open to suggestions on how we might define that. So I do apologize for not being able to be more specific on that regard. I mean, I, I think that we're, uh, you know, um, I, I mean, I think that we, we should be able to tell if we're getting unstuck and the facilitator is going to help us there. And I do want to kind of follow up on what you said. You know, none of us here, you know, I, I, I'd love to sit down and do the mass balance on the effluent and understand the chemistry a little bit better. But, but most of us here are not experts on our side on water policy. And so the facilitator is important to us because that gives us somebody, you know, that's an expert in water policy. Will be able to tell whether these issues are significant or not, will help us understand the significance of those issues. I mean, I know there's people on our staff who are, but having a facilitator also help, give us that, that viewpoint of we're making progress or we're not making progress. I think will, will become apparent.
Okay. So would you be willing to, accept a compromise and incorporate, uh, the direction in terms of, um, if we haven't made, uh, significant progress, uh, you have 60 days and really that's pretty much, uh, hits the, um, June 15th.
That was kind of my intention, was as we're going to be having a June 15th update that we would want to know by that point if we're making progress or not.
Okay. So, uh, would you be amiable to just incorporating that direction as part of, um, the, my item four, coming back to council on, uh, June 15th?
62 days.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, that's fine. Yeah, that, we can, we can combine those into one item instead of, instead of, uh, separating them.
Okay. And then, um, this, uh, is to, um, Jeff or Carrie, uh, on Councilmember Cohen's, uh, item number three, where he, um, is, uh, encourages the negotiations from item two allows experts from both agencies to have an opportunity to address perceived risks and find solutions. I wanted to get your, uh, feedback because I, I know that Jeff spoke directly to, to risk. And I know that that's, uh, a huge component of the negotiations that I wanted to see, uh, to get your, the feedback and thoughts on this item three.
Thank you. I think, um, I think we're probably not going to solve the risk issue, issue in, uh, in 60 days. But, um, but I think for us, it's important to understand how we will solve those. And, and, and that we're not going to give away the risk assessment role to another agency. So we need to get to the point where we are comfortable as the operator of the facility. And so I think it's really defining what are the things that need more work and, and then agreeing how that work will get done. Um, so that's, um, that's my perspective on it. Jeff, anything to add?
I don't know.
Okay. So are you comfortable with the language in item three?
Let me find that again. Hold on. Jeff, are we comfortable?
Yeah, and I'll just read it again for you. Encourage that the negotiations from item two allows experts from both agencies to have the opportunity to address perceived risks and find solutions that maintains an equitable risk sharing model.
So, um, so I'm not comfortable with the term equitable risk sharing. And I think that, um, again, the, the, that the, the, the rate payers benefiting from the water project should bear the risk of that water project. And I, I don't, the wastewater customers aren't gaining a benefit. And, and again, there are a smaller pool of people.
Yeah, I was gonna.
I think, I think there's fair in there somewhere.
Yeah, I, I actually had thought about it since this morning and wanted, would have made an amendment to my, to the, to the way it was written to have it just say, you address perceived risks and find an appropriate risk sharing model. So that we're not, I mean, because, you know, how do you define equitable, right? So. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. And then, uh, Mayor, I don't know if I've exceeded my 10 minutes already or.
Oh, you're okay.
So, um, this is to, um, uh, Carrie and Jeff again, uh, in the, um, the Water District, uh, letter that they just put out. They were looking at a, um, timeline of September versus our, our timeline of December. And I was wanting to get your feedback and thoughts on, uh, how achievable, uh, a September timeline would be.
Um, a September timeline to have an entire agreement completed just really isn't feasible. Um, we're not staffed to, um, to take on this kind of work. And so we're, um, we're trying to, to squeeze it in, but, um, that would be a very heavy lift for us, um, without enough resources.
Okay. All right. Um, so I will not make that change. But I'm going to, um, make a motion to, um, move the memo from the mayor, myself and Councilmember Ramonis with the modifications of moving, moving the last sentence in, um, Councilmember Cohen's, uh, item two over to, um, my item four, so effectively saying that during the council meeting on June 15th, that if significant progress has not been made, then we will establish an executive steering committee comprised of representatives, et cetera, et cetera. And, thank you. Uh, and then the other change too was to change, um, Councilmember Cohen's item three and Councilmember Cohen, can you restate that? I know, um, it sounded good the first time you said it, but.
Yeah, just because we say it, change it to say find and find an appropriate risk sharing model instead of solutions that maintain an equitable. Just find an appropriate risk sharing model.
Okay. And that's the motion that I already got a second, so, okay. Thank you.
Vice, Vice Mayor Jeff has something he'd like to add.
Sure.
Uh, sorry, Vice Mary. Uh, yeah, so.
Just a second. There, there was an additional amendment. I just want to make sure Councilmember Raines is the second who was okay with the.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm looking with that.
Great. Okay, Jeff, you're on.
Uh, our understanding, uh, in Councilmember Cohen's, uh, recommendation was, uh, 60 days after, um, having a mediator or facilitator, uh, to return back. Um, obviously, we're, uh, we're still planning on coming back with a status update on June 15th. I think the next, uh, item in line is to secure a funding agreement with Valley Water, secure the, the facilitator. And then that's when I, my understanding was the timeline would start to return back with an update from the facilitator. And so I think the, the first two steps are funding agreement, get the facilitator and, and then, and then start that clock. It, it, it was a staff understanding.
Jeff, could I jump in here? Is there a reason why this couldn't be done in parallel? I mean, I know everybody's strapped right now at time, but I think we're all trying to work collaboratively and as quickly as possible to try to do something that's very hard. And I know that you won't have a mediator in place, but at least some of the preliminary conversation or the ongoing conversation with the waters could continue until a mediator is found, couldn't it?
Oh, absolutely. Um, we can absolutely do that, especially I think with the direction there, focus on a reservation of water rights. Uh, we'll work on that, um, start that and keep moving.
And Mayor Licardo, I would add, we, we would be fine, um, with a letter from Valley Water committing, um, a certain amount of reimbursement to get us started. And so that we're, um, we know that will be reimbursed while we work out the details of it.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Vice Mary, did you want to respond?
No, um, that, that was, that's fine. Uh, Mayor, you, you said it, uh, you said it well. Put, plus a fact to, um, the, the main, main point of my item four was really as a check-in. Obviously, uh, we're incorporating Councilmember Cohen's language as well, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll factor in all of those, those issues and timelines and, and resources into consideration on, on the 15th of June.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, I'm going to go with Councilmember Cohen next, but just a time check. It's now 5:42. Uh, why don't we take a break at six and we'll come back after dinner? If that's all right, if anyone has any concerns, just say so and we can adjust. Councilmember Cohen?
Uh, Mayor, I, I'm so sorry to, to interrupt, but as a seconder, I, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, Carrie, you received the, um, the adjustment that you needed in order to advocate for, uh, the rate payers and for the benefit of rate, rate payers.
I think so.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to trust, I absolutely trust the leadership of our vice mayor. So, um, I, I think he heard you, uh, say that and I'm going to trust with what, uh, Councilmember Cohen and, and Vice Mayor have formulated that it, it, um,
it does. Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Okay.
So a seconder is still a seconder.
We, we still, I am, uh, still a seconder, yes.
All right, Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, um, I, uh, thank you very much for, for all this information and for helping clarify some of the challenges, Jeff, that, that we're facing in this, uh, in this negotiation. I know this is a, a challenging thing. I think, um, I certainly believe that the better solution, given that we're going to be putting recycled water facilities somewhere. I mean, and it's necessary to do it, that if we can work out a deal to have it be at our existing facility, that that's, that that's the best outcome for everyone. Now, how we get there, you know, it, it's going to have some pain points along the way. And I, I appreciate that, that, you know, you'll feel it a lot more than those of us who vote here today probably will. But, um, I, you know, all the things that you mentioned as challenges and, and what's made it harder to make the deal. You know, climate change, environmental regulations, all those things is actually also the reasons why we have to have a recycled water facility, right? Because there's going to be water shortages, there's going to be, um, you know, environmental issues with using water from other places. And so, you know, we need to be able to recover and recycle and use more of the water that, that we're generating here. So I, I hope that we can, we can work out a deal. Just one question I have about the cost sharing, that, that's item number one in the, in the main proposal. You know, you talk about obviously being short, you know, short staff, not having enough time. Part of this is though that if we can negotiate a good cost sharing, do you mean that you can staff up, hire some consultants and maybe help make it work? Or is that not?
Um, I think in the interest of time, we wouldn't have time to, um, necessarily hire. But, um, but we do, as we've talked about, we would need the funding to, um, ensure we're not using the wrong rate payer money to support a project. And, but we, um, we won't, it depends on what we decide to negotiate, if we would need long-term staff or not. And I think it's too early to say if we would.
Okay. Yeah. And I, and, and just to go back to the question about June, about whether we'll know enough on June 15th. I, I would hope that, you know, with the, once we get a facilitator in place, even if it's mid-May, that a month of time that the facilitator is working on this and helping bring sides together, they'll be able to tell, is there any hope by June 15th that this is going to be something that can be done in the timeline we're looking at? I, I would hope that we'd be able, somebody, people would be able to tell that and that we'd be able to determine that there's a good enough working relationship to make it work, you know, or not. And plus, facilitator would be able to tell if, if some of the roadblocks are getting cleared. So I, I hope that that would be the case and I'm, I'm an optimist that we'll be able to make it work. I do have one suggestion for an amendment. It's a, you know, potentially friendly amendment. The, in your, I think it's number four, which I may be wrong about the numbering. Oh yeah, number four, I might be looking at your original memo, which was, so probably is number five now, returning by December, in December for vote. I was hoping that we could amend that to say no later than December. So that sort of says, look, December is when we want to come back or when we think we can come back. But, you know, since the Water District has expressed an interest in, in even getting it done sooner, we say no later than December, then we can, you know, it's not saying we're going to set a date now for December, but that when it's ready, it can come to council.
I'll accept that.
Okay. Um, I, someone did text me, uh, actually it was, uh, Assistant C Manager, uh, Lee Wilcox, uh, making a very astute observation, which is if we complete this item, we don't need to come back after dinner. Uh, so maybe it would be better if we all just toughed it out, um, and, uh, and starved a little so we could actually get it done. So, uh, thank you for that astute observation, Sir Wilcox. Uh, I occasionally lose track of such things. So, uh, if it's, if there's no objection, we're just going to plow through, uh, with remaining comments from council and then we'll go to the public and hopefully wrap things up with the vote. All right. Uh, Councilmember Peralos?
I'll be brief. I was going to mention that as well, but thank you, Lee, for mentioning that. And, uh, I actually appreciate my colleagues', uh, diligence in, in, in this issue, especially Vice Mayor Jones. Uh, as he stated, he sort of, uh, has, has taken the, the charge here. Um, and I think it's certainly a complicated issue. And I do recognize that, uh, we're getting a bit prescriptive here in regards to getting involved in the negotiations. And, um, and I know that, uh, we just had a pretty lengthy discussion in regards to our, uh, our work plan for the year. And so clearly respecting, and I know that came up in conversation from our city manager and, and Carrie in, in the last conversation. Um, and so I think trying to thread, um, a, a, a needle here on seeing if there's still a path forward, but being very conscious of, of what our staff has in front of us. I would say I, I'm not super optimistic, uh, unfortunately, because I, I, I actually am in favor of us, uh, being a partner here with Valley Water. But I, I think, um, I think just the reality of, of what we have as challenges in front of us may be too daunting. But, um, I'm supportive of this direction, uh, moving forward. And so, and hopefully, uh, we can end up, uh, being able to find some light at the end of the tunnel. Lastly, uh, and this will be a, maybe a topic for a slightly different. Lastly, and this will be maybe a topic for a slightly different time, Mayor, but considering we have our new kind of ten-minute policy, and I know you, you tried diligently to police yourself there, I am curious how we are going to roll forward with that. Your comment time reached about fifteen minutes, the Vice Mayor's about thirteen. I don't know how we're gonna, you know, police something like that to, to put a stop to, to a ten minutes, if, if, you know, you're expecting somebody on the council to chime in and, and, you know, say, hey, you've reached your ten minutes, and, you know, and so, I think it's just of note, this is one, maybe the first time we're coming across it. I actually appreciated the conversation, so I was, you know, I, I think it was important. But, but I think that it's worthwhile just to kind of consider, you know, this is brand new, and we should figure out how that's actually gonna be implemented.
Yeah, and my interpretation of it was if I could get done by ten minutes and allow the response to exceed that, I, I would at least be satisfying with regard to my own statements. When Vice Mayor Jones was in it, we were having a lot of back and forth to try to get a motion on the floor, and so it seemed like a really bad time to be cutting somebody off. So, points are well taken, we're gonna have to figure this out.
Thank you. I'll be quick as well. I, I guess I'm a, the reaching the light at the end of the tunnel, I'm a, I'm a tunnel half-full kind of a girl, so I'm a little more optimistic. I would also, my preference would also be to partner with Valley Water, and so I just wanted to state, state that. I think I'm hopeful that we can figure this out. And then lastly, I wanted to ask Chair Estimeta about his letter. I wanted to give him a couple of minutes about his letter, especially when he brought up the recycled water expansion, integrated versus standalone facility, source control, and what is it, the private activity considerations. Chair Estimeta, could you please have the last words? I, I'm not sure if everybody was able to read your letter today.
Yeah, I'll just quickly tell you that, you know, we, we, we respect the decision to adjust or pivot to a newer, expanded direction from the, from the memos that, that you received. And, you know, we respectfully request negotiating all the necessary components at the same time, and that we do that, you know, we're willing to identify September as a deadline, and we appreciate your support in establishing an executive negotiation team sooner rather than later, consisting of elected officials from San Jose and Valley Water, as well as staff to allow Critical Public Works Project, this project to proceed. You know, as I previously mentioned, we have always anticipated that we would expand, that we would expand the present purification center. And since then, we've decided that we wanted to go with a P three, which is a public-private partnership. That would, that would create a number of issues that we have to resolve, because of course now we have a public-public partnership. And there are some issues that are gonna come in, both regarding internal revenue tax issues and others, as well as, you know, risk. You know, we've mentioned risk all the time. Obviously, we want to expect the, the private, the private folks, our private partners, to accept the risk going forward. And so, so there are a lot of issues for us to discuss, that's why we're anxious to get going, we're anxious to get our, our private partner involved. And as we continue to, to express, we want to continue our long-term partnership with San Jose, and we would prefer to cite it at the present purification center.
That's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, it was on mute there. Let's go to the public and then, oh no, Councilmember Reese, can we jump in?
Thank you, Mayor. The only, the only thing that I was, that I'm gonna bring up is if we could get additional information as we move forward about the, the purification project to, to inform us about what that water supply would look like. Because as you know, we, we're, we're all very concerned about the, the six, I think six hundred and fifty million to a billion cost overall for that project. And from what I, from what I read before, when, as I was preparing for our last meeting, I thought it was about, oh gosh, I can't see it in my notes, but maybe Jeff could, or, or Carrie, could you help me figure that piece out? But if, but if you can't, maybe this is something that we can ask Valley Water also to help us translate. What, what does that mean? How much water would we be adding to our supply?
Greg, I can start, and Valley Water can jump in if they want to. The project itself would add about, about ten thousand acre feet a year, which would be about four percent water supply, additional water supply or replacement water supply, however you want to look at it. About four percent.
Four percent. Is that, is that also what any, any member of the Valley Water team would confirm?
Yeah, at ten thousand acre feet, but in a year like this year, where our importer water allocation is only five percent, that's five thousand acre feet. This, this water is, you know, and, and on the spot market, water is going for a lot more than, than any water, and recharging it into the groundwater recharge ponds, and making sure that it's available for retailers to pump out is, is, is very key. And so I think that, you know, if our overall water use was in the two hundred thousand range, but, you know, if, if the supplies that we're drawing from are our local groundwater aquifer or carryover supplies, this is a new constant supply that keeps moving, as opposed to some other storage or some other type of thing. So I just want to make sure we're, you know, you can think about it as in apples to apples.
Thank you, Aaron. Well, hopefully that this could be part of that conversation in, in terms of agreeing on what those apples are. Because I, I'd like to understand it a little bit more in terms of, of water supply and what it actually means to our ratepayers. What, you know, what, what would that benefit be? What would that cost be to those ratepayers? Maybe they would prefer for that purchase, you know, for continuation of, of a water to be purchased rather than a purification center, but in terms of cost. Maybe this is not a long-term solution, but so anyways, if we could have some, some of that be part of that information when you come back, or Carrie, as I don't know if we, we're gonna get an information memo at some point, or when you check in, if, if some of that information can come back to us so that we can continue to understand the, the issue as you further discuss it with Valley Water and figure out what that means.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll partner with the Valley Water team on, on responding to that as we come back in June and then subsequent updates.
Lastly, I just want to say that I, I've heard from everyone the word partner, and so I really like that. I think it's like Councilmember, as far as I said, it's a glass half-full to go on with those, these kinds of analogies. So I, I really appreciate that. I think that the partnership needs to make sense ultimately for our ratepayers. And so I hope that we can work this piece out, so we can tell our ratepayers, this is what you're, this is the cost to you, but this is what your benefit will be. Ultimately, we always have to think with them in mind, and so I appreciate Carrie, you bringing them forward, the ratepayers forward and center, so that you can continue to negotiate with them, and my, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the public, and then we'll come back to the council for any final questions or comments. Person with the phone number, ringing five one four zero.
Yeah, I, I would hope that they could remove the fluoride from the water, which is unnecessary. I mean, we use fluoride toothpaste, fluoride in the fluoride, everything. No need to put that in. Money that's gonna, that costs all of us as ratepayers, including the city council. And, you know, when the times are better with the water situation, these, these things should have been thought out, but they were not. And that's, that's a fail on the water companies, the city council, state, county, federal government. It's really too bad. The county doesn't even know where the waterway, doesn't even know which waterways are what. They're worthless. Completely take them out of the picture, because they don't do anything. At least you guys are trying, which is, you know, I'm not one to praise the city council, but you guys are doing, you guys are trying. County, they don't even know what they're doing. Sue Ellenberg, she smiles a lot. But, yeah, you know, I mean, this is something serious that we have to take into consideration. And we need to manage our waterways better. Native Americans did a great job before the Europeans showed up managing the waterways. You know, we have bulldozers and all kinds of technology, you know, we don't seem to use it very well. It's really sad if you think about it. But, yeah, it's time to start getting serious about the infrastructure, everybody, and these rate increases, shame on you, you guys are using this big time, hiding it in the, in the tax bill, hiding the garbage in the tax bill. Garbage is going up, everybody. Remember listening, your garbage is going up, and the water is going up, and it's all hidden in a tax bill, so you don't see it. It's all done on purpose. It's kind of like the shady, high-end restaurants that like to hide fees and tips in things. You guys should go back to the traditional water bill, so everybody knows what they're paying. And shame on anybody who wants to increase the water rate by the rates that you guys are doing. This is what the mafia would do. Keep in mind, the mafia in Italy to this day still controls the water and the garbage. What does that tell you about San Jose, Santa Clara County, State of California? You guys, you guys are glorified mafia.
Paul Soto.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of pieces, man. There should be two items. You, you bifurcated, and then you merged. So there's, this should be two public comments, not one. I, I just want to stick that for the record, because you did that at the beginning, and then you conflicted. So what I want to say is that water is free. I'm a Native American. My body is designed to consume water. It's actually designed for it. Just like it's designed to consume oxygen that is expelled from a tree leaf. Okay, so the, to the fact that the, the infrastructure that is set in place and is being built is going to be built to accommodate this four hundred thousand people. Because the cat's out of the bag, man, that's public record. Four hundred thousand people is in that general plan to come into this area. So that's what all this infrastructure has been built for. Okay, what they're gonna do is they're gonna use the current system and the ignorance of the people to accommodate that, which is going to be in the future, not for the current residents. And this is, this is the crime, right there is the crime, is that this council is being disingenuous with the people, because you are not being honest or straightforward about it. The equivocation that came from Councilman Peralis with respect to the decapitations and everything that's going on in this city, that built this city in the first place, and, and the waffling of, oh, well, I agree with you on one point, but I, this is gonna happen. This is actually gonna happen. That's cool. I ain't got no problem with that, but this council is going to accept full responsibility. The future will vindicate me. I will be vindicated in my lifetime, but I will be vindicated in the future, because this is public record. What is happening right here, right now?
Thank you. Rowan Lebrun.
Thank you, Mayor, for discussing it out. So I've been trying to stay away from this, but quite frankly, I've heard quite enough from an outfit that's beginning to make the VTA and the High-Speed Rail Authority look good. First of all, a bit of history. We've been here before, back in nineteen eighty-six. We drained Lake Anderson during a three-year drought. Water company revenues tanked, rationing was brutal, and rates skyrocketed. So what's the solution? The same as what I've been trying to put forward for the last five years. I just sent you all information about how an Italian company repaired the Mosul Dam in Iraq for a hundred thirty million dollars. The same company that repairs lifting three hundred-foot dams in China without draining them. Please contact these people and bring Anderson Dam back in service in two years or less. Thank you. With regards to Patrick over the war, I believe they are on the right track. The only solution, they, quite frankly, go out to the private sector and reach out to them and say, how can you design, build, finance, and maintain this, this reservoir, you know, for us in, in some kind of you know, way, way that makes sense for you financially. And the last thing I want to bring to your attention, some of you who know about these different alignment for high-speed rail, we have the opportunity right now to say seven billion dollars between connecting Gilroy to Fresno. If we do that, we should have more than enough funds in the coming infrastructure plan to basically take care of our water problems once and for all. But quite frankly, I want the city to take the lead on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bigman?
Hi, thank you. A good level of honesty and information today. It's a bit daunting. Good luck how we all can move forward. Thank you for the words of Paul Soto also about public comment ideas. At least, I'll try here with my best here, at least three San Jose programs, garbage and recycling, community energy and water will be questioning rate hike issues in the coming months. I hope the San Jose area can look to and want to approve upon the interesting use of subsidies by East Bay Community Energy, the EBCE, at this time. How can the city of San Jose, as a water retailer, learn how to more legally serve and better serve the needs of people of low income? San Jose City Government and local government agencies simply have to be open, honest, clear, clear, and direct with everyday community about upcoming rate hikes and subsidy questions, and that low-income people are not left out of new subsidy ideas in order to pay for possible new rate hikes and water programs. Higher-income residents should be doing fairly well in this era of COVID-nineteen. They simply can afford to pay higher rates at this time. The question is, can subsidies be developed and used in San Jose at this time to minimize the overall rate hike process? And more specifically, can subsidies be developed to not offer any sort of rate increase at all to residents of lower income? And what can be their sad new struggle of paying bills? Subsidies should never be considered a dirty word, but can San Jose City Government, local government agencies and community first learn to ask and to practice how to balance the books with the many new Valley Water projects now in motion? To also note wildfires, an increase in sea level rise, and a possible large earthquake may all be causing problems for San Jose and S F Bay Area in the next few years. No matter our future, we should always consider the ideas of natural disaster emergency preparedness, and that open dialogue and questions about subsidies can help address important issues at this time, including equity. The basis of any dialogue at this time should simply be that people of low income should not have to, shouldn't only have to pay a minimal amount of rate increase, and most importantly, we have to consider how people of low income may not have to pay any increased rate increase at all over the next few years.
Thank you. PJ Currents?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would just like to, in three things, I'd like to praise both Valley Water and the council, and the mayor and Vice Mayor for their prioritizing social values very highly in this area. I would also like to thank Valley Water for the work that they have done on the environment in preventing subsidence and a history of management of our water that far supersedes what happened in the Central Valley. They've done an excellent job, and they have a publication, Water in Santa Clara Valley, which is a quick learn on the history of water. I would also like to set a standard. This is, as the Vice Mayor said, so complicated. Putting things out as simple percentages or averages, or as a retailer does, the typical consumer betrays ambiguity. And what we're trying to strive for, especially because it's so complicated, is transparency. I'm not a financial expert, but I am pretty good with Excel. And the difference between compound interest, which is what we're talking about with rate increases, is a three hundred percent, the way I calculate, three hundred percent interest with the nine point six and a two hundred and sixty-seven percent increase with the point oh eight five. So it's different, but it's not as different as we would be. So it's different, but it's not as different as we would be um uh led to believe. And to use a, an average or typical uh use of CCF ratepayer, I think, is um, i- it betrays education. We need means, modes, mediums. We need ranges. We need something that is not trying to hide, but to um reveal. I think it's a standard that would be easy to follow. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Currents. All right, let's come back now to the council. And uh, I believe we have two motions that are on the floor. So let's take up Councilmember Esparza's motion first. Are there any other comments? Or questions about the motion? And Councilmember Esparza, do you want to perhaps restate it so it's fresh in everyone's mind?
Um, sure. Let me, let me go find it. I had the um other one first. Um, so the motion was to accept the report from Valley Water um and to direct staff to uh with, to return with a letter for submission, um, asking Valley Water to uh expressing our concerns around the impacts of the increases, particularly on our hardest-hit households. And in that letter, request that Valley Water reduce or eliminate the increase for this year, evaluate which projects may be able to be moved onto the property tax roll, evaluate other potential cost savings measures, and explore the creation of an equity program compliant with Prop two eighteen that could create a low-income tier that would allow Valley Water to charge lower rates. Although I understand that may not be um possible, but if that can still be evaluated, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Okay, that was the motion. Any questions or comments before we vote on that? All right, let's vote on Councilwoman Esparza's motion.
Yes.
Paralis.
Hi.
Cohen.
Hi.
Roscoe.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Esparza.
Yes.
Arinas. Yes.
Uli.
Hi.
Mahan.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Licardo.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we now have Vice Mayor Jones's motion. Are there any questions or final comments before we vote on that? Okay, let's vote then on Council, on Vice Mayor Jones's motion.
Menas.
Yes.
Paralis.
Hi.
Cohen.
Hi.
Roscoe.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Esparza.
Yes.
Arenas. Yes.
Uli.
Hi.
Mahan.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Licardo.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I believe that's all the business for today. I really want to thank all the staff and the board members from Valley Water for joining us for our afternoon. Uh, we know there's a lot of work ahead, but we appreciate everyone rolling up their sleeves and doing their best to get to the finish line. We know these are critically important projects for the future of our, of our region, our city. So thank you everyone for your hard work. Uh, let's go to the public now for open forum. Paul Soto.
Paul Soto from Horseshoe, a hundred and fifty million inadequate. That is an inadequate amount of money. There is no way that I am going to accept that dollar amount and use and be used with respect to uh to allot for the racial inequities that have happened in this area. No, this city must accept a responsibility for what has befallen me and my family. I don't speak Spanish because it was beaten out of my mother in San Jose Unified School District. I don't speak Spanish because of that. And this city is a hundred percent responsible. You, Paralis, you talking that snitch out of your mouth? Like, yeah, I agree with you. And you know what? Martin Luther King spoke about Luke Warren, people like you. He would rather somebody be direct and honest and straight than to waffle like you because it's men like you that are dangerous. They are dangerous to the public. Why? Because you get their scent. I believed in you. I trusted you. I actually saw you as my mentor. I don't have no experience in this stuff. I had to learn everything on my own. And I've been doing a hell of a job and I have had fucking bullets fired at me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Soto. Uh, Mr. Bigman.
Hi, thank you. Uh, a beginning simple tiered subsidy system has to better, be better addressed and realize in the future of the haves and the have-nots with subsidy issues in the future of San Jose. And there needs to be a nuanced, sensitive, open, creative thinking in the future of subsidy programs that can acknowledge past community practices along with considering important new concepts of what can be positive sustainability and human care at the local community level and at the regional, national, international levels as well. And they're not hurting each other is part of an, uh, the important lessons of positive sustainability and how to leave the era of COVID nineteen. Boy, uh, it's trying to work out this COVID nineteen mess we're all in. Thank you. Uh, I wanted to offer that with um the translation issues. Roland Lebrun made a really interesting point about closed caption use and how that can be more of a uh, you can invite a whole bunch of different languages to that process, which I think is a great idea. Um, and again, just to try to get the excitement going about the idea, or just the thought process going about, you know, uh, talking to people at San Jose State and asking if they want to be interpreters for Zoom meetings and asking if city staff can want to work for a hundred bucks an hour instead of three hundred bucks an hour. And if that can be worked out with the union, I think that that can be negotiable. And it's from that, we have to really address the fact that there is a serious bugaboo that there can only be an English-only process to city government when instead, you know, this process can be, you know, just an engaging process that that introduces everyone how to work better within the community. And so you need the translation process to happen. We have to get out of this English-only mind frame and learn to address that. And I hope I've helped with that tonight. Thanks for the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Roland.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I just wanted to say thank you for the closed captioning. The way I use it is not because I'm, I'm not deaf, not, not yet, not yet anyway. But that actually allows me to follow multiple Zoom meetings simultaneously. I get audio on one and closed captioning on the other. That's what I use it for. The, but with regards to the point Mr. Bigman made, yes, I I do appreciate earlier you did make an attempt by providing Spanish translation and that didn't pan out, but the sooner we can advance the technology and address every ethnic group in our city, the better. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Lebrun. Uh, and yes, we, we are uh heartbroken that you're not only watching our meetings. Uh, the person with the phone number ringing, five one four zero.
Yeah, I'd like to tell the city council that you guys really need to focus on basic infrastructure issues. You get involved in these social issues and fringe groups, you're not, you're not governing. You're, you're, you're playing, uh, you're, you're, you're delivering pablum. You need to get back to getting these businesses open, making sure that they're standing up to the county when they want to charge fifty times the fines. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves for letting that happen to the residents that you directly represent, letting, letting those sleep falls at the county, including Sue Ellenberg, who's got to be the worst politician I've ever met in my whole life. Uh, you know, the roads, the waterways, they're important to manage and in good times or bad, it has to be taken care of. Utility companies aren't managing, at least PGD isn't managing their, their, their electrical cables, their natural gas pipelines. They put everything back into the shareholders and look what happens. Look what happened. They burned up everything. They burned up all their profit. They burned up their entire company. They refused to put things back into their infrastructure. And you guys are at fault for not, for not giving them a nudge or what you guys call leaning in or whatever. It's, it's disgusting. I mean, you guys always have plenty of time for flag raisings and parades and candlelight vigils and all these things. You, you really need to focus on basic infrastructure. And we as a taxpayer are so abused in this city, this county, and this state, always by the federal government, can never get away from that unfortunately. But all of you should all look at yourselves and and ask yourselves, are you really doing a good job for the city? I, I don't think you are. Uh, you know, you're more, you know, flagpoles and sheds are more important. You got this creepy people driving around with code enforcement, looking for sheds and flagpoles. Pam Foley, hey, are you listening? Maybe they should be looking at.
Thank you. All right, I believe those are all the members of the community who wanted to speak. Thank you all for, for participating. Uh, the meeting's adjourned.